Howard Zimmerman, John Newsman, James Nielsen.
All right, certainly like taking this opportunity to welcome everybody here again this evening. Looks like we still have a pretty good sized crowd. Everybody's sticking with us through this process. It's as long for you guys as it is for us. Uh, need to take care of a few items. Um, need to get something submitted into evidence. I've got a PowerPoint presentation, um, from February the 9th from Seberston. That's S-E-V-E-R Wrestleman. Exhibit one, looks like it's about a 28 page PowerPoint presentation that she presented that evening. Next item for housekeeping that we need to take care of. All right, we'll, uh, we'll go ahead and get going where we left off, uh, last week. Uh, we had Mr. McCann, he was, he's, does my input come forward, Mr. McCann? Um, I believe the applicant is, has additional questions for you that he'd like to present. So with that, we'll go ahead and, um...
Mr. Chairman, before you do have a question that's, I guess, housekeeping there.
All right.
Um, we were advised that on February 5th, the Regional Plan Commission was going to make a recommendation to this board, or that was going to be submitted last week. Uh, I have not, don't believe that has been submitted, so I guess I'm asking what the status of that is today.
Okay, um...
I never said it was submitted last week. We submitted this most, we submitted probably next week, so it could be done at that one time. Only do the soil and water at the same time, things up together, one on together, so it'll get... Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. Just trying to figure it out, all right? Thank you.
All right, with that, I think we're, we're ready. Mr. Blazer, you may continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. McCann, hello again.
Oh.
Um, could you tell me what parts of the record of this case did you review to prepare for your report and your testimony?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I was certainly looking at, uh, the application, you know, the documents that were appended to it. Um, reviewed the conference of plan, then reviewed, uh, MLS records and so forth that my studies based on.
Did you review, uh, County Exhibit 2, which is the supplemental information submitted dated October 15, 2014? Does that ring a bell?
I can recognize it by that name.
Okay. How about, uh, the report that Mr. Maru submitted, those are regions submitted 41, did you review that?
I did see that, yes.
Okay. There are just a few, a few preliminary things that I'd like to go through, some factual things that you say in, in your report, actually trying to find out what the sources of those statements is, so this shouldn't take long. You have your report up there with you?
I do.
Okay, if you could turn to page 6. You there?
Yes.
Okay, there's a section here entitled "Summary of Salient Facts and Conclusions."
Yes.
And you talk about the type of turbines.
Correct.
Um, and then your conclusion here is thus, "A specific size and model is not identified to a certainty, and a range of facilities is proposed for the special uses." What does that have to do with your opinion about, uh, impacts on surrounding property values?
Well, nothing that's terribly significant from the standpoint of value impact, because whether it is the 1.79 or some slightly different or slightly larger model, uh, based on the data I've researched, the impacts are going to be within the same immediate range.
Right, and you mentioned the 179. You do know that Infenergy has identified either the GE 179-100 or the GE 172-103?
Correct. Um, I'll take your word for it, I remember the second one specifically.
All right. Well, the, on the same page there, you, there's another section that you, uh, entitled turbine size?
Yes.
Or turbines size. And, uh, you say here, "Height from the base to the tip of any blade perpendicular to the ground is 431.4 feet." You see that?
Yes, I do.
And do you know which turbine you're talking about there?
I believe that was the one that they're using as the example, if I recall correctly, it was the, uh, presumed to be larger of the two that they were thinking of.
The 103, does that ring a bell?
Um, not really, no, not really.
Let me, let me just represent this to you, I think, Mr. McGinnam will agree. The, as you described it, the height from the base to the tip for the 100 is 426.5 feet, uh, and the 103 is 431.4 feet. Can we accept that?
I will agree with it.
Okay. So based on that, it looks like when you're talking about turbine size here on page 6 of your report, you're talking about the 103. Does that seem correct?
If that's what you're representing, again, I accept that as...
Okay. Now, let's go to page 7 of your report, and you talk here about proposed setbacks.
Yes.
And you've got, uh, you reflect 1.1 times the turbine height to the property line, and then you have a note, "Turbine height of 431.4 feet, times 1.1 equals 474.54 feet. Applicant Figure 3-2 shows only 469 feet setback." And what's the point in you pointing this out in your report?
Well, it seemed to be inconsistent with what the Livingston Code, um, required a minimum of 1.1, so, uh, I thought it was important to draw that.
Well, I suppose, it was a very bad word, a question. My question is, what does that five foot difference have to do with your opinion about impacts on surrounding property values?
Well, part of my report is property value impact, and part of it is, uh, really, um, for the purpose of addressing the criteria 5 or standard 5 for approval of special use. And in that regard, uh, I was really just showing that I had quite a pretty carefully, uh, and this kind of inconsistency with what the code requires.
I'm, I'm gonna show you what's a printout of Pleasant Ridge Exhibit 6.
That's from the...
That's from, that's the October's exhibit. And actually, since that one's, the legend on that one is so difficult to read, I've also taken the liberty of blowing up the legend and calling it Exhibit 6A. And I'll, I'll represent to you, Mr. McCann, that 6A is a blow up of the legend on 6.
Correct.
And if you look at either 6 or 6A, 6 is probably a lot more difficult to read, um, you'll see that it shows a setback of 476 feet, not 469 feet.
Yes, I saw that.
Okay. Do you know why in a report you used the setback map for the 100s when you were talking about the setbacks for the 103s?
I copied that particular thing right out of the application as it was received or committed from the county website. Um, I wasn't distinguishing or wasn't aware that it had been updated to correct the, uh, permanently correct or modify or adjust of the setback. So, you know, it's, uh, that's what was in the original applications I used.
Okay. And if I told you that the closest non-participating property line to any turbine is in fact 476 and a half feet, or two feet under the county's requirement, would you have any basis for disputing that?
Not off the top of my head, no.
All right, could you go to page 12 of your report? And, uh, there you go there. See that? Okay. And there's a section here, "Purpose of Appraisal," second paragraph. It says, "The purpose of the assignment is also to determine..."
Yes.
Okay. Um, and you talk about the purpose, and you also conclude that paragraph with, "And, uh, from a real estate evaluation and land use compatibility perspective?"
Yes.
Okay. Um, and then if you go to page 21 of your report, the last paragraph, you're talking here about an industrial overlay?
Yes.
Your, it is true, is it not, that you're not a land planner?
That is true, I'm a certified land planner, I'm a real estate agent.
You're now a member of the American Planning Association?
Yeah, I am.
And you have no education in land planning?
Although I've done 30 years of appraising property and studying land and land impacts, uh, but not a formal education in land planning, as you're looking.
Okay. Um, now, could you go now to page 52 of your report?
Yes.
And, uh, what you have there is the cover, or a picture of the cover of that, uh, MPAC study that we talked about last week, is that correct?
That is correct.
And if you go to page 53. And there you have a bar chart and a table on that page?
That's correct.
All right. I'll hand you what I marked last week, or what we introduced last week, is Pleasant Ridge Exhibit 197A. You'll recall that's the MPAC study. Could you point out, uh, this, this bar chart that you have in your report, could you tell me where that is in the MPAC study?
I believe Figure 2, uh, on page 18 is essentially the same chart, uh, without the horizontal lines drawn and, and the, uh, and the corresponding value level or sale price level that, uh, I have marked down the right side. It is also identical to an exhibit that's in one of the appendices to this report, which I recall, perhaps, is Figure ES2.
Well, here, let me... This is actually UCLC Exhibit 74, I guess it's... Your version of the same study with some of the appendices attached, is that correct?
Correct.
Is this your version of the same MPAC study with the appendices attached? This is the one I got in the report, so I'm just trying to find out what that's supposed to be.
Yeah, I, I, I believe, uh, the appendices are...
All right, so if I, as you said correctly, you took the table that's in the MPAC study on page 18, and then you added information to it, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so, as this table appears in your report, that does not appear in the MPAC study, correct?
Not the dollar figures, the distances, the height of the bar charts, the indication as amidst the dollar figures that are shown on the left margin or the vertical axis, uh, it clearly shows approximately where those figures come in. My figures are, uh, for measuring on a screen, basically.
Right, so I, I just wanted to be clear that as it's represented in your report, this isn't in the study, you added information to the bar chart from the study, correct?
I clarified, yes, sir.
Okay. Um, and then the table at the bottom of page 53 of your report, where's that from?
I copied that.
So that's not from the report, from the study, that's not from the MPAC study?
That's a summary of the MPAC study and the bar chart that is right above that, based on distances, based on prices, based on the number of sales that they're showing, um, and based on their, essentially their municipal control area for this study, and anything beyond five kilometers.
Got it. So you took it, you derived information from the report, inserted it into this table. This table, as it sits here in your report, does not appear in the MPAC study, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Probably should, but it doesn't.
All right, could you go to page 30 of Exhibit 197A in the MPAC study?
I'm sorry, sorry.
Page 30, three zero, 197A, it's the shorter one, it's easier to go to, probably.
87?
30.
Page 30.
Right. Uh, that's a list of the appendices to the report, correct?
Yes.
And one of them is appendix, is identified as Appendix G, uh, resale analysis, land sync, and MPAC industrial wind project sales review, is that correct?
Well, that's what they listed, yes.
This is 197B, it should be identified. I've handed you, Mr. McCann, with, we marked Pleasant Ridge 197B. Do you recognize that to be the Appendix G to the MPAC study?
It looks familiar, I have it categorized, it looks familiar.
Okay. All right, we can move on from that. You've reviewed the standards applicable to a special use in Livingston County, correct?
I have, yeah.
Uh, and you know that the standard applicable to the issue that you're talking about is that the use will not substantially reduce the value of the property, correct?
Well, and the use and enjoyment of property, uh, certainly that is part of personal ownership of the property, part of the bottom of rights, part of the expectation of property ownership.
And I get that, right now just talking about value, you understand the standard in the, in the county's rules is that the use will not substantially reduce the value of the property, correct?
Well, that's an excerpt from that particular standard, but it's not the entirety of the reference.
Um, and what you've done here to establish, or to support your opinion, uh, that the use, in this case, the, the construction and operation of the wind farm will substantially reduce the value of the property, is you know what's called a parent sales analysis, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
And a parent sale analysis, we're gonna, we're gonna go through some fundamentals here, so that everybody understands where we're at. Uh, parent sales analysis looks at sales and resales, and tries to measure for the difference potentially resulting from the detrimental condition, is that right?
It's part of the description of the girl that described it, it certainly isn't the entirety of it, but when you were referring to, uh, the time element, uh, that's not how it would apply in my parent sale analysis.
I understand. Generally speaking, that's, that's what you're doing, though, you're looking at sales and resales to try and compare the differences to see the impact of the detrimental conditions, correct?
Not always resales, that's a different type of study, that's a resale study, uh, it can be part of, and is part of, what I developed in my parent sales analysis.
Right.
For example, target sale, 1, 2, and 3 is the same property, and it clearly shows a very large decline after the turbines were built, so that would be a resale analysis. And then pairing up each of those first three target sales, uh, with other properties that sold at the same time, but were at greater distance, making the adjustments for the differences that otherwise exist, uh, between homes that are grouped as closely as possible by age and size and so forth, while then that leaves remaining variable of proximity to the winter bias, and that's what that analysis solves for.
Got it. All right, let's go over a couple of things that need a report that you rely on, sort of more as backup information to support your opinions. Uh, could you go to page 45 of your report?
Yes.
And here you've got your list, your literature review.
Yes.
Uh, and you identify what's on that list as independent studies, is that correct?
Yes.
Uh, and you include your own prior studies, right?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, and these are ones that you've testified for opponents to other wind projects, is that correct?
I have testified in my prior studies, yes.
Uh, and then another one that you include is by an individual named Keelish, K-I-E-L-I-S-H, is that correct?
Keelish is the...
Hey, excuse me, thank you. Well, he's from Wisconsin, I probably pronounced it wrong there. Uh, he was from Wisconsin?
Oh, I guess.
Okay. Uh, and if I'm correct, tell me if I'm wrong, Keelish compared vacant land within a wind farm footprint to vacant land outside the footprint, is that correct?
That was part of what he did, yes.
Okay. Um, and do you recall that Keelish's, well, call them, inside the footprint properties were standard rural land, and the outside the footprint properties were in an improved subdivision with roads, utilities, and other amenities, do you recall it?
I recall there were some differences with some of his sale data, and some of his sale data, there weren't those differences, uh, he used multiple of his in his study.
And then the properties outside the footprint were also in an area called Fisherman's Estate, do you remember that?
Not specifically, no.
Let me see if I can refresh your memory. This is, uh, 201. Tom, can I, can I get one of yours, that seems to be a short one? I've handed you one that marked as Pleasant Ridge Exhibit 201, and I'll represent to you, Mr. McCann, but this is a presentation that was submitted, uh, during the Deer Run Project here, it was, uh, by an individual retained by the applicant in that case, uh, and it's a critique of Mr. Keelish's study. And if you look at, um, the slide numbers 27 to 34, you probably saw the 27, uh, I think you'll see that the outside the footprint properties of Mr. Keelish's, uh, study were in a, an area called Fisherman's Estate, and they were located on the largest lake in Wisconsin.
Um, that's what it shows, that's what it shows, I'm not familiar with this response, so I can't vouch for it, or do it one way or the other.
And are you aware that, uh, with respect to the vacant lots in the inside the footprint part of Mr. Keelish's study, uh, brand new quality homes were built on several of those lots near the wind farm after it began operating?
Um, that does not ring a particular bell, but again, I have not had the opportunity to review this response or verify any of the information.
Well, if you can take a look at, um, let's start with slides 21 to 26. I'm just asking, I, I know Jack, he's asking to look at the study he's never seen, and then he's also taking parts of it and saying, even though the studies, the, the, the report says 30% were in Fisherman's Estates, he's now asking, he's telling the witness it's 100%, and the witness hasn't had a chance to look at this, re- review this. This is really, uh, this is the kind of stuff we've not been allowing across examination.
Well, if I may respond, Mr. Colonel, um, first of all, I didn't say 100%, and all I'm doing right now, since this was submitted during a hearing that Mr. McCann testified in, I'm asking him to look at some of these slides to see if specifically he refreshes recollection as to the data that was reflected in Mr. Keelish's report, which he cites as a source in his report. That's all I'm doing.
All right, I agree with the fact that he did refer to it in the, in his independent studies, the Keelish study, but this is a rebuttal to that Keelish study, so I guess if there's reference to it in the Keelish study, without the rebuttal from Lorpin, uh, you can specifically ask him a question for the Keelish study.
Okay. As you sit here today, you don't recall that, uh, a number of the vacant lots in the inside the footprint part of Mr. Keelish's study ended up with, uh, quality homes after the wind farm began operating?
I have not gone to inspect it, I have not verified it in any other manner, uh, as of today, that's...
So you have no idea on the way or the other what happened?
I have no idea.
You have no idea on the way or the other what happened in Mr. Keelish's study area, correct?
The idea that I have is, having read the study, you know, several years ago, but certainly not from this rebuttal presentation, uh, or response to your questions.
Okay, then we can move on from that. Um, in your literature review on page 45 of your report, you also rely on some work by Mr. Lancing, correct, LA NSIK?
Well, I certainly considered it as one of the independent studies I reviewed, read, uh, have at least a better than a passing familiarity with, but so it's, uh, not to mince words, but when you say rely on it, uh, I rely on my own work, but other people's work I consider, uh, for what it's worth to me.
Okay. And Mr. Lancing was the one who worked with you on that human species habitat report that you two tried to submit on Terrell that we talked about last week, correct?
We did it back some minutes.
And that's the one that was rejected by the Barlow Review Tribunal?
Uh, yes, they decided property values have no place as a question in their research.
Okay. Um, let's go back to parent sales analysis, that passive stuff. Um, you remember we talked a little bit last week about Randall Bell's books on detrimental conditions?
I do.
Okay. And I believe you testified that Mr. Bell is a recognized expert in the field of analyzing detrimental conditions?
He certainly is a published author, uh, I believe a recognized expert. In fact, you and I worked on the same case once a lot of times.
Do you know who Dr. Thomas Jackson is?
Uh, the name rings a bell, yes.
If you know, is he also a recognized expert in the field of analyzing detrimental conditions?
I don't know if he's a recognized expert in that, I know that he has a lot of credentials, I know the, uh, a lot of his name to be stamped on the 2013 Berkeley Report, uh, but I don't see any contribution from him in that report, including his, uh, Curricula vitae or, uh, or his certificate, which, you know, if that's his appraisal, it should be there.
Dr. Jackson has published an authoritative text on methods and techniques for contaminated property evaluation, right?
Okay.
Is that correct?
Um, it doesn't really go at the moment, but I've read many treatises and so forth, and I don't necessarily recall all the author's names.
Do you know P. Bartman Delacy, D-L-A-C-Y?
Well, I hope so, he was my co-presenter in the summer of appraisal, listened to on this very subject, property values, uh, near wind farms, uh, back in 2012.
So do you consider him an expert in the field?
Well, I think he knew some things about wind farms, but I think his studies frankly lacked, and I would consider to be a reliable basis for opinion on the subject. He used assessors' studies, or actually interviewed assessors, uh, as to whether or not reducing assessments for properties and their turbines, and, you know, you know, that's useful for answering that question, but it's not useful for answering the question of whether or not there are in fact reduced sale prices or impacts on property value, so, uh, as much as I like the person that happened to answer your question, you know?
Okay. Um, do you agree with the following statement, and this is from Randall Bell, "The fact that a property is impacted by a detrimental condition does not automatically mean that it has a material impact on a property's value."
That's the answer.
Okay. And do you also agree with this statement of Mr. Bell, "In the analysis of detrimental conditions, it is important that the appraiser be knowledgeable about applicable tools, properly select and apply those tools, avoid unproven or suspect methodologies, and ultimately have relevant market data to support opinions and conclusions."
That sounds like the outline for exactly what I did, so I agree with it.
Good. Uh, I'm gonna ask you some questions about, uh, basic requirements of a, a well constructed matched pair analysis, and for each of those, I want you to tell me if you agree that that's one of the requirements, okay?
Well, I, um, might help if I got the book, but I certainly have read it, uh, very well versed in performing matched pairs analysis.
Go ahead, firm it. So, do you agree that the basic requirements of a well constructed matched pair analysis are similar properties in terms of size, construction, and use?
That's definitely qualified, yes. An appraiser should always use the best information available, uh, so using properties that are of the same use is ideal, uh, that are very similar in size and age is ideal, uh, but appraisers also really should, or, I was gonna say can't, but that doesn't always work, uh, for some guys, but they should invent any comparables, uh, use what the market has provided, and that's the best information available, that's what you should use.
Okay. Another one of these requirements for a well constructed matched pair analysis, similar locations except for the condition being analyzed?
Again, you know, within the framework of what the market is able to provide, absolutely.
Okay. And that's, that's, what you're coming for there is what's called location effect?
Well, that's, that's one word that pretty much covers a lot of things, yes.
Okay. Uh, another one of those elements would be similar dates of sale?
Not necessarily, is that something that can be in MPAC that is a result of being proximate to a... Is that something that can be an impact that is a result of being proximate to a detrimental condition, or what some people call LULU's, locally unwanted land use is? When you can't find a buyer, maybe some people, I'm not making for sure, some people don't reduce their prices right away, but know, after marketing for a length of time, finding that they have to reduce the price to attract a buyer, that's making the longer marketing times. And certainly, marketing times are a factor to be considered.
Well, and actually, I suppose my next one, because my next element of a well-constructed matched pair analysis is similar market conditions, right?
Well, again, yes. And when you sell dates for each target sales I've done that are as close to it as possible to the overall database of properties from Livingston County MLS database, why, that did allow for keeping controls sales as close to the target sales as possible. So yes, again, a good outline.
You're familiar with something called Midwest Real Estate Data, known as MRED?
Yes, I know.
And you subscribe to that in your business, right?
I do.
Going back to market conditions for a moment. I want to ask you a few questions about some of the concepts that are discussed in Mr. Maruza's report, Pleasant Bridges, 41. Do you agree that the recent economic recession and decline of the residential real estate market is generally recognized and have started in December of 2007?
Depending on where, I would agree with that, and depending on where it certainly impacted the real estate market uniformly everywhere.
Do you agree that the decline of American housing crisis began as early as July 2006, and this can be considered the time period when the market peaked and the bubble was becoming evident in general?
Again, it depends, that certainly the bubble was stretched pretty far by July 2006, but where it sprung, looks and where it burst, very place by place.
And do you agree that in the following months, the subprime securitized mortgage market collapse led to the financial markets' crisis in the fall of 2008, and by mid-2009, the longest and most severe economic downturn in decades?
Certainly was a tough time in the market for a lot of properties. Again, property values were not impacted uniformly, in some cases, very little, very little impact compared to the broader market statistics overall.
Do you also agree that six consecutive quarters of economic contraction and unemployment in excess of 9% to 10% led to significant declines in housing and other real estate asset values since the market peaked?
I genuinely agree, I'm not sure if you'd agree with this exact statement, but the concepts are a secret, that, you know, when the market had its troubles, it was, it affected a lot of property, a lot of regions, a lot of communities, but others were much more resilient, not as affected by those kind of downturns. And Mr. Maruza, he cites examples from the Chicago suburbs, some locations that were hit real hard, and these would be Livingston counties, not a comparison at all.
Do you also agree that sustained downward pressure on consumer spending and the lack of a generally identifiable robust economic recovery continued to affect the development potential of virtually all properties through 2011, and began an identifiable recovery by mid-2012?
Well, it sounds like something I wrote.
Do you agree with it?
Well, if I wrote it, I agree with it.
Okay. Do you agree that prior to current indications of at least a partial recovery, the sale market was characterized by an increasing number of distressed sale asset prices, negligible sales velocity, and lower overall prices?
Again, in the markets that I was working in when I wrote those statements, absolutely.
And you agree that the sale market in late 2008, in 2009, and with a small temporary exception near mid-2010, due to the federal homebuyer tax credit, as well as seasonal differences, i.e. winter versus summer time periods, was substantially diminished as the buyer demand had all but evaporated due to the poor underlying economic support and overall job losses?
That, again, applies perfectly in some situations, in some locations, and not others.
Do you also agree, finally, that construction of new homes came to a standstill with many builders filing bankruptcy and subdivisions remaining unbuilt and vacant, in some cases with partial infrastructure in place?
Certainly those kinds of things have been going on in the overall northern Illinois real estate market, but again, that doesn't apply everywhere to the same degree.
The real estate market, you would agree, has improved in the last year or so, right?
Yes.
But that hasn't translated into a return to the boom years, would you agree with that?
Depends on where you define the boom years, but I would say probably not overall.
And do you agree that the boom period was marked by easy credit and overbuilding, but today we have tight mortgage credit and widespread shortages of homes for sale?
I don't know about widespread shortages of homes for sale, but there's, in some locations, there has been a buildup of demand that has not been said, so I pay an increase in inventory, but the builders are catching up with that.
If you could go to page 16 of your report.
16.
16. And here you're talking about exposure time and marketing time, is that correct?
Yes.
And it looks like they're similar concepts, is that interesting?
Yes, to some degree, exposure time is the amount of time leading up to the assumed sale date on the appraisal day, the marketing time is the appraiser's estimate of how long it would take to sell the property after the effective date of appraisal.
And those concepts are also known as cumulative days on market, or CDOM, is that correct?
Well, that's not synonymous with that, cumulative days on the market is an expression or data that can be used to derive a basis for exposure time or marketing time.
Exposure times were affected by the recession, is that right?
In an overall general sense, yes.
And listing prices were also affected by the recession, is that right?
Yes, in some cases were, in others, for example, some of the study areas in my report.
Do you agree that in the recent decline in market conditions, the tendency of sellers was to overprice the initial listing of their property?
Again, that's, that has applied whether in a, in my studies, in a target area, in close proximity to three miles of turbines, and also the same trend for the removed. But yes, you found in my Cal study, by comparing the cumulative days on the market statistic, it was a year longer within the target area than near the turbines. So, you know, yes, it applies to both, just more so to the turbine area.
So your answer to my question was yes.
I'm not sure I agree with your question. I don't think I answered it.
Do you agree that in the recent declining market conditions, the tendency of sellers was to overprice the initial listing of their property?
As values were dropping, that was a tendency, and then cut across the world, really everywhere that values were dropping.
And do you agree that that resulted in subsequent price reductions and/or cancellations and re-listings?
In many cases, yes.
And that resulted in longer exposure times, right?
That was one thing that contributed to longer exposure times. The other, as I studied it, borne out, was the lack of marketability or the market resistance to buying homes near turbines.
This one may be quick. 196, now. I hand it to you once with the Marcus Pleasant Bridges, 196. Have you ever seen that before?
Yes.
What do you recognize that to be?
Well, it's a land value lease transfer study for rural property in Illinois broken down by regions showing what the commodity pricing trends is, well as land value trends in these streets.
Is that something you've used in the past in your work?
It is.
And then if you go to page 35 of that document? That's where the analysis starts for the north central region, is that correct?
Yes.
Then if you go to page 37? And that's a summary table of sales, and it includes Livingston County, is that correct?
Yeah, amongst others, yes, sir.
Okay. Let's go back, we're done with it. Let's go back to repaired sales opinion. Do you recall, I believe you said this last week, that in your parent sales analysis, you made appropriate adjustments, do you remember that?
I didn't say that one second now.
Okay. Do you agree, Mr. McCann, that in a parent sales analysis, it is important that the same type of size and construction type of property be considered, because that eliminates the need for making significant amounts of adjustments?
To the extent that the market data presents itself as available, absolutely. And within the confines of what the market transactions actually show, by all means, use properties that are most comparable, but for that one independent variable, meaning in a study like this, approximately the turbines, but other than that, do the best you can to pair up sales with the sale near the turbine, for, again, things like, first of all, the date of sale, as close to that date of sale as possible, because the target sale, and the age, the size, and then make the adjustments for differences, be it lot size, or acreage, or other factors like finished basements, or lack thereof.
And by doing that, you're also eliminating the need to use subjective determinations to solve for the difference of the condition you're supposed to be assessing, right?
Well, unless you consider using experience and judgment at all to be subjective, then certainly, any adjustments that I've used in this case are perfectly consistent with not only my experience in praising properties, residential properties, but also in line with the values and price points of these particular sales. Unlike some studies, which pool data from regions that have values that can swing, you know, 300% and using the same adjustment, like in regression statistical study for the same value on a bathroom, when a bathroom, it isn't worth the same in a $75,000 house as it is in a $375,000 house. So yes, I can say that much, that's very clear.
And I appreciate the information, but that wasn't a question I asked you. The question I asked you was, if you agree that matching the two properties as closely as possible eliminates the need to use subjective determinations to solve for the difference of the condition you're supposed to be assessing?
Matching the properties as close as possible reduces the impact of adjustments. There's always adjustments, there's no property, it's exactly the lifetime, but what I was trying to illustrate for you, going into a long narrative, was that those adjustments are not the same, and there is some level of experience and judgment required in determining adjustments, rather than just letting a computer pick them for you.
Well, what you're trying to do is compare basically apples and apples, right, as close to?
As close as possible, yes, sir.
For this case, well, I suppose it's obvious, not in this case, but in every case, you have to make sure that the data you gather is accurate, right?
Yes.
What data did you review to do your parent sales analysis in this case? What data did you review to do your parent sales analysis in this case?
Well, I started with the Livingston County MLS database, and I also merged it together with, as I mentioned earlier, the MRED, Midwest Real Estate Data Database, that used to be the Northern Illinois Multiple Assessor Service, but it's called MRED now. And then when that was in Ohio, to the best of my ability, I also checked it against Livingston County assessor's database to look for indications of foreclosures, square footage, things that in some cases the Realtors had, and then they're listed, and in some cases they didn't. So that was the data I looked at to confirm the facts about the property, the facts about the sale, and the conditions of sale, and going now it adds that the database of the county is derived from transfer declarations, which is essentially the name of the buyer that I take to fix that.
So you did review assessor records, correct?
I did use assessor records as well, yes.
And did you also use assessor records for the studies that you did in Lee and DeKal counties, the ones that are in your report here?
I'm pretty sure that I have to double check my file on that. It was a couple of years ago, but I believe I did.
Okay. Could you turn to page 28 of your report? In the paragraphs, I have, I notes here, it's the seventh paragraph, it's the one that starts the foreclosure and short sale trends?
Yes.
And you say here, note that near the turbines, the foreclosure rate is three times the rate in the control area. What's your cutoff from near the turbines?
Three miles.
And are you saying that all of the foreclosures within three miles of turbines were due to wind farms?
You can draw your own conclusions from that, but I can tell you that there's no other indication that, of any other factor, for example, none of these foreclosure sales were by the landfill, or some other impact, land use, and given the number, I think it's a fair indication that the turbines definitely had something to do with it.
So it's your testimony that every foreclosure in this county within three miles of a wind farm resulted from being within three miles of a wind farm? Objection, mistakes, test point. Trying to find out what you're saying.
Go and answer the question.
No, that is not my test point. My test point is that the foreclosure rate within three miles of the turbines in Livingston County or immediately adjacent to Livingston County has three times the rate within the number of sales in those databases as compared to the other rural areas of Livingston County that were at least three miles away from any turbine, or landfill for that matter.
So are you then saying that that differential, that 300% difference or 200% difference, was exclusively due to proximity to the wind farms?
I'm saying that it is an elevated level of foreclosure activity closer to the turbines as compared to the areas further removed.
And did you review every foreclosure within three miles of a wind farm in this county?
When you might review.
Did you check the records to see what the reasons may have been for the foreclosures?
No.
And then in the same paragraph here, you say, this is consistent with the reports of home abandonment near turbines. Do you know which homes in Livingston County were abandoned due to wind farms?
Well, abandonment is a broad term, it can be defined a lot of different ways.
I'm asking how you define it, sir.
I'm trying to do just that. Some people might have abandoned their home upon finally being able to buy it, buy it on a short sale, but in other ways have no intention of leaving. Others might have been drawn out by the noise from turbines, as Mr. Schindler was, as some other people that I have interviewed and know both, have demonstrated to me and told me, confirmed to me, that the reason that they left was because of the turbines, or the turbine impact, the turbine noise. Abandonment can also be to stop at making the payments, but go back to the lender, and the lender's selling it, that's what would be a foreclosure sale, or an REO sale. And when somebody feels that they're throwing good money after bad, that is not uncommon across, not everybody does it, but that also fits within the framework of how I use the term abandonment in the context of the range of activity that falls under abandonment near wind turbine projects all over.
So how many people in Livingston County told you that?
None in particular told me. None in particular told me.
Did any in general tell you that?
Well, I think I just described a couple, shall I continue? As far as people that abandoned their homes because of the proximity to turbines and the noise.
In Livingston County, yeah, how many?
None in Livingston County.
When did you say you did the Lee and DeKal Counties study?
Two thousand and twelve.
So, you didn't do that one for this project, correct? That's the one you did for some other wind farm opposition?
It's a different study I worked on, yes.
All right. Was that for the Main Street project in Lee County?
Yes.
Okay. All right, could you go to page forty-three, please, of the report? This is your parent sales analysis summary, is that correct, for Lee and DeKal Counties?
That's correct.
And you're looking, you looked at thirteen sales, is that right?
Well, thirteen pairs.
Thirteen pairs, excuse me, yes, thirteen pairs, correct?
That's correct.
Correct. And the details for each of those properties are at the very tail end of your report, right, pages one-thirty-one to one-forty-three?
That's correct.
Okay. We're not going to go through all of them, because Mr. McCann will probably cut me off, so I'm just going to use a few examples. I'm heading into that section now, Mr. McCann, did you want to take a quick break? It's almost seven-thirty. It's up to you. I can tell you that I've got the parent sales section, I'm going to do a few of these, and that'll be done by now. You might want to take a break.
Why don't you just keep going?
Okay. Sure. All right, let's go to Lee County, then. Pair number three, that's on page one-thirty-three of your report.
Pair number three, on what page? Okay.
All right. And I just, this I think applies to all of them, but let's use this one as an example. The target sale is a ten-fifty-five County Line Road, is that correct?
That's correct.
And it's a vinyl site farmhouse with nine rooms, three bedrooms, that was built in eighteen sixty-one, and it's on a three-acre parcel, is that right?
I'm trying to follow your title, yes.
I'm sorry.
And it was, I was pushing a house.
It's built in eighteen sixty-one?
Yes.
Okay. And just so we're clear on your methods, the target properties are the ones closer to the wind turbines, and then you say are at land debt, right?
Yes, this one in particular was fourteen-hundred-and-sixty-nine feet from nature.
Okay. And then you're comparing this target with sale at seventeen fifty-nine Franklin Road, is that right?
Well, that's one of the concussions I made.
That's the one I'm looking at here, that's, this is, we're going to use a few examples, we're not going to go through all of them, so.
No, I'm just trying to make clear that it's not the only time I've used that pair, occurred that target sale with, at least not, at least a couple other control sales to test it under different methods, with different properties.
I've got that, Mr. McCann, right now, I'm just asking you about this one.
Okay.
All right. Stay with me, it will be done a lot faster. So, and again, just in terms of your general methods, the one on Franklin Road is the control property that's farther away from the wind turbine, right?
Yes.
Okay. And the one on Franklin Road is a two-story seater side house with six rooms, four of which are bedrooms, and that was built in the year two thousand, is that correct?
I have a note there, it's accounted for in condition.
I'm just asking for the year, the year that it was built. You see that it's the year two thousand?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So, this one was built one-hundred-and-thirty-nine years after your target property on County Line Road, is that correct?
Without taking into account the mileage and so forth, it would come, yes, sir.
Okay. And it's on a five-acre lot, is that correct, your control?
That is correct.
Okay. And, correct me if I'm wrong, although the Franklin Road house was one-hundred-and-thirty-nine years newer, and was on a lot that's two acres larger, you still adjusted your control property upwards for another twenty-three thousand, five hundred dollars, for being four-hundred-and-twelve square feet smaller than the target property, is that correct?
Focused on the size adjustment, yes.
Yes, okay. And then you made another ten thousand dollar adjustment for an insulated heated and air-conditioned barn, is that correct?
Yes.
And then another upward adjustment of fifteen-hundred dollars for the Franklin Road control property being in average condition, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, let's go to pair number four, that's on page one-thirty-four. And now here again, as you were mentioning before, this one uses the same target at ten-fifty-five County Line Road, right?
Yes, and I can work with whatever was there, that was selling, this wasn't the usual house, but I still attempted to pair it up with other controls, yes.
Okay. And it's, looks like the County Line Road house is two thousand ninety-two square feet, is that correct?
I would tag that pair four.
Yeah, pair four, the County Line Road, you're saying target, it's two thousand ninety-two square feet?
Yes.
Okay. And you compare the farmhouse at fourteen-fifteen McGur, that's M-C-G-I-R-R, real estate?
Twenty-one hundred eighty-four square feet.
So, pretty close in size?
Yes.
All right. And this time, they're only fifty-two years apart, you're correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Again, with cross-section of the margin.
All right. And just so we're clear in terms of size, you show the McGur Road house as being twenty-one hundred eighty-four square feet, is that correct?
Yes.
Would it surprise you to know that the Lee County assessor says that that house is actually twenty-five hundred and sixty-eight square feet?
I'm not sure if I could respond to that, I'd be surprised, surprised if they had it that way, or the realtor had it that way, or wherever, wherever that came from.
Well, you did, I can't remember what you said with respect to Lee County. Did you in fact review assessor records in Lee County for your management pairs?
So, based on my recollection, I did. I know I've gone in and interviewed the supervisor of assessments, Wendy Byers, about the sale activity, and the appeals, and so forth, around the original project in Lee County.
This is a lot less daunting than it looks, but I'll hand you, all right, Mark, this place, which is in at two forty-three. Which are records relating to some of your management pairs. And you'll see, in the lower right-hand corner, there are little three-digit page numbers.
Yes.
Okay. Could you go to the page number sixteen? We don't hear there, Parker. And you'll see, this is the property record for fourteen-fifteen McGur Road, correct?
I'm looking for the address.
Property, up in the upper right, you see the PIN number, below that is property information, below that is property address.
You mean the upper left?
Upper left, excuse me, I'll turn around.
Yes.
All right, you see the McGur Road address there?
Yes.
And then if you go farther down to the bottom table on this record, you've got building information, below this disclaimer, you've got model name, and then you've got total building, twenty-five hundred and sixty-eight square feet, do you see that?
That's what it shows, yes.
Assuming it's true, and you were approximately four hundred feet short in your assessment of that control property, that would require a downward adjustment to compare it to the County Line Road sale, right, the target property?
It would.
Okay. Let's go to pair number five, that's on your page one-thirty-five.
I'm there.
Okay. This pair uses a sale at nine ninety-seven Woodlon Road as the target, is that correct?
Yes.
And do you see that the, with the remarks, that the view of the turbines is screened by woods, is that correct?
Yes, the view of it, as I've learned, not the noise.
Okay. And your biggest adjustment here between target and control is forty-two thousand, three hundred dollars for the acreage difference, is that right?
Yes, yes.
And you're adding ten thousand dollars per acre to the control property on Franklin Road, is that correct?
That's correct, that was a five-acre lot versus nine and a quarter, almost an acre lot for the target sale.
And that's the farmland price, right?
Um, yes and no, I mean, certainly it's residential property, but out in the rural areas, that's, lots, values tend to trend, or index to the farmland values, and at that point in time, it's about the farmland values, or that, it's also about what the incremental difference is between those two lot sizes.
Okay. You do know that neither one of those properties was farmland, correct?
Well, I think I just explained that, yeah, that these are residential, the land values are determined in rural areas.
All right, let's go to pair number six, on page one-thirty-six of your report. And the target here is the same one as the pair number five, the one on Woodlon Road, correct?
Yes.
And then the control sale is the one on McGur Road that you used in pair number four, correct?
Yes, we crossed reference on the deal.
And McGur Road is a farmhouse that was built in nineteen thirteen?
Yes.
And Woodlon was built in nineteen ninety-nine?
In this case, yes.
And you show a zero dollar adjustment for that eighty-six-year difference, is that correct?
That is correct, based on the renovation of that old home.
Okay. And then we compare, let me see, for your target, seven rooms, three bedrooms, one-point-one baths, to your control of twelve rooms, four bedrooms, two baths, is that correct?
Again, yeah, that's something that is accounted for in the square footage.
And you adjusted downward by fifteen hundred dollars, is that correct?
Just for the difference in the bath, but the room count difference, again, is accounted for in the square footage, so, as everyone pretty much knows, the partitions are much more movable, but in large, the size of the building is really the cost and the values.
All right, let's go to pair number eight, page one-thirty-eight. The target on this one is nine sixty-five Bingham, B-I-N-G-H-A-M, Road, same as pair number seven, is that correct?
Same as pair number seven? Yes.
Okay. And the control property is a sale in October two thousand eight of ten seventy-two Greenwing, Greenwing Road, correct?
Yes.
And Greenwing Road is a ranch house with six rooms, two bedrooms, and two baths, on seven-point-six-eight acres, is that correct?
Yes.
And that site, Greenwing Road, is wooded at the rear, and is bordered on the north and west by a river, is that correct?
I don't specifically recall, it's been a while since I've looked at that property.
Right, this one. You added thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars, or ten percent of the sale price, because your control was built in two thousand and one, and the target was built in two thousand and six, is that correct?
Which, which adjustment?
Thirty-seven thousand, five hundred for the five-year differential date of construction.
No, for the difference in condition, that was a ten percent of the sale price adjustment, yes.
Ah, I see. And did you have any indication when you did this one, that the, the control house on the Greenwing Road was run down or dilapidated?
Uh, no, just based on what, for an adjustment like that, I can tell you with my basis reviews that I've been doing to the MLS, it was not showing any recent renovation, where, as when I knocked on the door at two sixty-five Bingham Road, I met the, the original owner, the first buyer, and that was a brand-new house, which I went into, and you should give a tour of the house, and that was all in brand-new condition compared to something that was, uh, not in poor condition, but not in brand-new condition, and the ten percent adjustments is in line with what I found for the difference in market value, based on that difference in age, really, that relates to condition.
So, did you do the same thing, you just described on Bingham Road with the Greenwing Road house, knocked on the door, toured the property?
With which property?
Your control, Greenwing Road.
I know you did that.
Oh, you did. Uh, did you make any adjustment downward for the additional facilities at the property on Greenwing Road?
No, what it shows, they both have wound, though, in at the time of sale, so, that's, that was a wash.
Well, for example, did you make any adjustment at all for the fact that the house on Greenwing Road has paddocks, a round horse pad, riding area, and a pasture?
Um, not specifically, no, but the, the target sale also, on five acres, had a pasture area, had an old red barn, that the buyer, big boss, or his daughter, raised rabbits, so I guess, whatever your animal preferences are, those properties let themselves to it.
Well, you do know that the property on Greenwing Road is a horse-train and boarding facility, don't you?
Um, it might be now, I don't have any recollection, but it was prior to sale.
You have no idea what it was, that when you did this study?
It was a house.
All right. You don't know that it was a horse-train and boarding facility when you did this study?
Objection, since the facts are known.
I'm sorry, could you go to page thirty-three of the exhibit I gave you, of the Lee County I got the numbers on the lower right-hand corner. That's actually from the MLS, isn't it? Or the MRED?
Twenty-fourteen MRED, yes.
All right. And if you look in the remarks, great horse facility just outside of Amboy, do you read that?
I can see that, yes.
Okay. Um, horse stalls, you know, thirty-by-forty barn, four forty-by-forty paddocks, sixty-foot round pad, one-twenty-five-by-two-hundred outdoor riding arena, three acres pasture adjacent to barn, wonderful property, facility currently used for training and boarding horses. Was the target home at Bingham Road used for any of those things?
Well, like I mentioned, it was used, the buyers intended it to raise rabbits, but as far as the facilities in the barn, paddocks, fencing, and so forth, are improvements that might have a special value to a particular buyer, but not necessarily translate into market value, like dollar-for-dollar cost basis.
But you don't really know, since you didn't know what it was used for when you did this study, is that right?
Well, I think that probably mischaracterizes what I did when I did the study versus what I remember today.
Okay. Let's go to pair number one, it's on page one-thirty-one.
Uh, I'm sorry, pair number one?
Pair number one, page one-thirty-one. Your target sale here is the one, or the one closer to the wind turbine, is at three-four-nine-five Lee Road, is that correct?
Yes.
It's a frame house built in eighteen eighty-six?
Yes.
Um, and are you aware that after the sale, the house was demolished, and a construction loan for three-hundred thousand dollars was taken out in June twenty-fourteen?
No.
Do you have any reason to doubt that?
I think I probably, given how close it was to the turbines, I would question it.
Could you go to that same position that I handed you before, could you go to page Bottom of the page, let's see what it says, mortgage history? Bottom of the page, let's see what it says mortgage history? Mortgage date, June twenty-four, twenty fourteen, right?
Yes.
Mortgage amount, three hundred thousand dollars, correct?
Yes.
Mortgage lender, whoever that is, resource bank, and then mortgage purpose, construction, do you see that?
Yes.
This sale was actually not of the house, but of the underlying five-acre land parcel, isn't that right?
Well, it had a house on, on its own, apparently somebody had to give it use for it, as it built with another house, perhaps.
You do know that it was listed as a target, don't you?
I don't recall that specifically, but it may have been in the MLS. It was a similar age as the control sale, so I used it. It was near the target turbine, so I used it.
And you're comparing that house to an updated and remodeled farmhouse, is that correct?
I made a specific comparison. If you look at the photos of, in this particular pair, you'll see that they have similar curb heels, similar age, um, some smaller lot size for the control sale, but it is part of how a praiser selects comps based on physical characteristics.
Okay. I'm, I'm, Mr.? I'm done with Lee, I'm gonna switch to DeKalb again, I don't know if you want to, it's about quarter to eight.
Okay, we'll take ten minutes. I get seven forty-two, so why don't we try to bag on seven?
Figure, let's go to DeKalb County, Mr. McCann. And again, just a couple of examples. Pair number one, it's on page one thirty-nine of your report.
I'm sorry, what did you say there?
Pair number one on page one thirty-nine.
One thirty-nine?
One three nine.
Okay.
All right. Your target, the one near the wind turbine, is at one three eight oh one Tower Road, is that right?
That's correct.
That's a ranch house on five acres with a total of five rooms, three of which are bedrooms, is that correct?
Correct.
And I assume you know that this property is an alpaca farm?
Um, I do remember alpaca farm, this is the one that was, yes.
And I assume you know that the property is zoned agricultural for small animals and horses?
Um, that does not specifically ring the bell, I don't dispute it.
You don't dispute it?
No.
Okay. And your control is a six point five six acre property and four five two seven West Sandwich Road, is that correct?
That's correct.
And this one is zoned improved residential and agricultural, is that correct?
Again, I recall that someone had sold this residence, just like the other one.
Alpaca was the part that's listed, exhibit two forty-four, those are some records from Kalb County.
And if you could go to, you see again, it has those little three-digit numbers in the lower reading corner. And could you go to page four? And you'll see there in the remarks that your target property is zoned and add for small animals and horses, you see that?
I'm reading the listing, looking for the spot.
Remarks. Below the picture.
Okay.
And then if you go to page eight. And this is from the assessor. And you see property class description, improved residential.
An assessor description or zoning description?
The assessor's description. See under twenty-fourteen land use information? Land use description, improved residential, property class description, improved residential.
Okay, the assessor's description versus the zoning description.
And then down at the bottom, zoning classification, PDR.
Okay.
And what is PDR?
Can recall, it's up my head.
Let's go to the pair number three, that's on your page one forty-one. Let me know when you're ready.
I'm there.
Okay. And your target here again is that same alpaca farm that you used in the first pair you looked at, right, on Tower Road?
Yes.
Okay. And your control this time is a house on four point one eight acres and two seven 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 nine Five Points Road, is that correct?
Yes, that's it.
And the northern half of that site is wooded, correct?
Again, it's been some time since I visited, I don't recall specifically.
All right. You added fifteen thousand seventy dollars for the finished basement on the Tower Road target sale as opposed to the unfinished basement of the Five Points Road control house, is that right?
Yes.
And that would be, that's a ten dollars a square foot?
Yes, for the, for the subject finished basement versus the control sale having a full unfinished basement.
Right. So that would be fifteen seven, fifteen hundred seven square feet? To get to the fifteen thousand seventy number?
Correct.
Okay. The entire footprint of the Tower Road house is only fourteen hundred thirty-nine square feet, is that?
Fourteen hundred thirty-nine square foot across building area, yes.
Okay. And you describe the condition of both houses as hampered, is that right?
Yes, or, or age, yes.
Okay. And you made no adjustment here for condition, is that correct?
That's correct.
Are you aware that the house was sold as-is and is grandfathered to tear down and rebuild?
Is grandfathered to what?
Tear down and rebuild.
I'm not quite sure I understand what you're, what you're asking me, that the property was grandfathered to tear down and rebuild up?
Are you aware that it was sold as-is?
As I said here now, I don't specifically recall that, uh,
Page twenty, page twenty-two.
Certainly, wherever it says the listing at the time I visited.
Page twenty-two of exhibit two forty-four, Mr. McCann. Let me know when you're there.
Page twenty-two.
In the remarks, the last line toward the end, sold as-is, do you see that?
Yes, as-is, this home is movement-ready.
And then down at the bottom, under agent remarks, this is on A1, but is grandfathered to, excuse me, grandfathered in to tear down and rebuild, you're saying you don't know what that means?
Is movement-ready and is grandfathered to tear down, rebuild, and seeing a, quite a contradiction in terms. Certainly, this broker put in that those remarks, they're not higher notes.
Okay, so you don't know what that means?
Well, I take as-is, movement-ready as an indication. And every one of these listings, except they had, I also looked at the interior photos, so I also looked on the websites at the time to look at the interior photos to become more aware with the condition. I forgot just from the remarks, more exterior photo.
All right, let's go to some Leesland County studies. Let's start with T seventeen, that's on page one twenty-eight of your report.
Okay.
And the target house here is two point, two five eight three four, north thirty-two hundred east, is that correct? Enough in the area, I don't know if that's Camberry or Capeberry?
Yes.
Okay. It's a two-story frame house, correct?
Yes.
Are you aware that it was built in eighteen eighty?
Eighteen eighty or nineteen ten?
Yes, I was looking at that, because the sale, the comparison made on page forty, I had it down, it was built in nineteen ten.
Oh, okay. Well, we make a better, now this one has seven rooms, three bedrooms, and one and a half baths, right?
Forgive me, this prints a little fine.
Yeah. I'll represent you that's what your document says.
Okay.
All right. And the house was built over a full unfinished basement and has two garages and a storage shed, right?
Three outdoor windows.
Okay. Now, let's look at the control sale. It's on page one twenty-nine. And the control is at one eight three seven five east twenty-five hundred north in Ondell, correct?
Yes.
And you say that it sold in November of last year for a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars?
Yes.
And did you independently verify the sale price on this one?
To the best of my recollection, that's, the MLS was the starting lines, and when there was any question, I also looked at the assessor's website, and in some cases, there was, for example, personal property included in the sale shown by the MLS, but the assessor had it down as not having that personal property or excluding the personal property. So it would only be the sale of real estate that they were recording, including their sales ratio setting.
Well, what is the MLS listing sheet, your report, page one twenty-nine, show us the listing price?
It shows the original was priced at one seventy-five and the most priced at one sixty. So that would have been, you know, a reduced price at that point.
So it was listed at one sixty, huh? Is that correct?
At the time of, uh,
On the sale?
Right.
And what did it sell for according to your listing sheet?
One seventy-five.
So it sold for, for more than what it was listed for?
On the control sale, um, I'm trying to remember, council, this is one that they excluded the personal property, um, that was included with the transaction but not for recording purposes.
Do you recall that one where the owner was just sitting there?
I don't off the top of my head, no.
Okay. Did you notice that the listing price was fifteen thousand dollars lower than the sale price when you prepared your report?
Um, I'm sure I did.
If I told you that the county assessor in fact reports that the sale price was a hundred and sixty thousand dollars and now a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, would you have any basis for disputing that?
Again, as, to the best of my recollection, some of the properties had some personal property and then we shouldn't be cut it out.
All right, Mr. McCann, I handed you what's been marked as Pleasant Ridge, two forty-five, which is putting some county information. Again, we've got those little page numbers. And if you could go to the very last page, it's page thirty-four. And then if you go down to the summary, it's about halfway down the page, and it says year twenty fourteen, it has the document number, sale type, sale date, notice, eleven twenty-four twenty fourteen. And that's, that's the sale that you're reflecting in your report, right, November twenty-four twenty fourteen? Is that correct?
I'm sorry?
Okay.
I had it as November twenty-one twenty fourteen.
All right. And the price shown according to the assessor's records is a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, correct?
That is what it's showing, it's, uh,
All right, let's go to T twelve. That's on page one oh eight of your report. There?
Yes.
Okay. Do you know what a duplex is?
I'm sorry?
Do you know what a duplex is?
Sure do.
Okay, what's a duplex?
Duplex is one building built as two units, or in some cases, a convertible back to one unit.
And your target here on your page one oh eight is two seven five one oh, east twenty-eight hundred north in Dwight, is that correct?
I'm sorry, my target?
Page one oh eight? Two seven five one oh, east twenty-eight hundred north?
Yes.
Okay. And it's sold in May twenty thirteen for a hundred and sixty-five thousand, is that correct?
That's correct.
And this is a duplex, right?
Uh, yes.
Okay. And let's look at your first control sale, it's on page one oh nine. And this one's at one oh seven five oh, east seventeen twenty north in Pontiac, is that correct?
Yes.
And you say it sold in July twenty thirteen for two thirty-seven, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars, is that correct?
That's correct.
And did you verify the sale price on this one?
To the best of my knowledge, yes.
If I told you that the assessor shows an actual sales price of two hundred and thirty-two thousand five hundred, five thousand less than what you sold, again, do you have any basis to dispute that?
Um, not right, right now. Yeah, they sometimes make adjustments for personal property.
And you don't know that they did that here, do you?
Um, not as absolute, that's fairly typical. Some buyers will exclude things like appliances or other things that they consider personal property.
But again, you don't know that that's what's turned here, right?
Um, I don't know that is a bad, because I didn't speak with that buyer or the attorney who built up the transfer declaration.
Okay. And it's your opinion that a one-story ranch-style brick house with a crawl space and seven rooms and three bedrooms is a good match with a duplex constructed over a full basement, is that correct?
Well, again, I had worked with whatever the market presented, and since that particular property near the turbines was a duplex, I first looked for sales that were near the same sale date and as close as possible in age and size. Again, a duplex that's a side-by-side ranch, half on basement, half on slab, could easily be deconverted to a single-family home if it's larger. So I worried if I had, I hadn't characterized it, we did.
And how easily could that, a house that was built originally as a duplex be converted into a single-family home?
Put an opening on the wall.
Were you ever inside the house?
Uh, no.
Okay. And with respect to your control property, did you adjust for the location of that property on a cul-de-sac and a development overlooking Ghost Creek?
I don't, I don't.
All right. Uh, page one ten, your second control sale, uh, that's ninety-eight fifty, north three hundred east, Grizzly, sold November twenty twelve for a hundred and twenty thousand, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. And here again, it's your opinion, a one-story ranch house with seven rooms and three bedrooms is a good match with a duplex, is that correct?
That's not how I agree, but I answered pretty much the same as before. I worked with what the market had, and since that property was a duplex, I picked comps that were as close in time as possible, as close in size and age as possible, and that, uh, would be more or less interchangeable in the market for somebody looking for that type of property.
Now, you've excluded foreclosures from your matched pairs, is that correct?
That's correct.
And that's because foreclosures aren't considered in our design transactions, right? And that's because foreclosures aren't considered arms-length transactions, right?
Um, generally, that's true, that's not always a fact, but as, uh, as a, as a rule of thumb, and the way I applied it, uh, here, if there are by common indication of foreclosure, I did not use it in the current sales.
All right, let's look at T ten, it's on page one oh three of your report.
I'm sorry, that page?
Page one oh three.
Okay.
And your target here is two four 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 seven, north twenty fifty east in Odell, correct?
Yes.
And you indicate that it sold in April twenty thirteen for two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, right?
Yes.
And are you aware that, uh, this property was turned over to Fannie Mae by Sheriff's Department in July twenty-ten?
That's not the sale I used.
I understand that, I'm, we're gonna look at the property history a little bit. Are you aware that this property was turned over by Sheriff's Department to Fannie Mae in July twenty-ten?
Not as I sit here now, but I know as I was going through the database, uh, and seeing some of the properties that had sold and resold, there were some that in fact, uh, prior transaction had been disqualified from my study on that basis.
All right, why don't you, you have exhibit two forty-five there, letting some county information, if you could go to page fourteen, please.
Page fourteen.
Yeah, one four, correct. And you'll see the, uh, the summary is about the middle of the page, and it shows in twenty, uh, actually, July two, twenty-ten, Sheriff's Department for a hundred and ninety-one thousand eight hundred forty-seven dollars, do you see that?
I do.
And, did you see this before you prepared your report?
Um, yes, I would have seen this, because, uh, the database search did include twenty-ten.
Okay. Um, and that was a foreclosure, right? That's, that's, the Sheriff's Department is a result of a foreclosure, correct?
It can be for other reasons too, but it certainly is an indication, uh, that in twenty-ten, it's not something that an appraiser could use, and what is qualified, an arms-length sale.
Correct. And then, uh, are you aware that, uh, a company called, uh, excuse me, are you aware that it was then sold in December twenty-ten by Fannie Mae to a company called Falcon Home Builders for forty-eight thousand dollars?
That does ring a bell.
Okay. And that's in fact reflected on page sixteen of this exhibit, right? If you go to, um, Pleasant Ridge is in two forty-five, page sixteen. See, there's a section there on sales history?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and then Falcon Home Builders was the seller in the April twenty-thirteen sale that you mentioned for two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, right?
Yes.
Okay. Now, your first control sale is on page one oh four, and it's one oh seven five oh, east seventeen twenty north in Pontiac, correct?
You're going a little fast with my...
I'm sorry, I was...
Same page as you, but...
I go the same speed until Jim tells me I'm going too fast, so...
Well, that's all.
Okay. It's page one oh four.
One oh four.
One oh seven five oh, east seventeen twenty north in Pontiac.
One oh seven fifty, east seventeen twenty north.
Okay. And this is actually the same one you used for T twelve, right?
Possibly, yes.
So again, we had that same, we discussed this with T twelve, we have that same five thousand dollar discrepancy between what you say is the sale price and what the assessor says is the sale price, right?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, and it's your opinion that a one-story ranch-style brick house with a crawl space, seven rooms, including three bedrooms, is a good match for a two-story frame, eight-room, four-bedroom house over a full basement, is that correct?
Again, council, I explained to you how I selected the control sales, uh, yeah, I'll readily agree, I'll tell you upfront, they're not all perfect, but they were better than, uh, by virtual dates, uh, and the other parameters I used, so, um, what I wasn't doing was, uh, you know, I was using the best sales available to fit that criteria.
Okay. Did you adjust in this period for the fact that the control property is on a cul-de-sac in a development overlooking Brooks Creek?
No, sir.
All right. Let's go to the second control sale, page one oh five. One seven seven five nine, east seventeen hundred north in Pontiac, you see that?
Yes.
And you say it sold in August twenty thirteen for two hundred and sixty-five thousand, is that correct?
Yes.
And if I told you that the assessor reports a sale price of two fifty-seven five, not the two sixty-five that you say, would you have any basis for disputing that?
Um, not without double-checking the, the website again, uh...
Page twenty-two of the exhibit.
I was, I was...
Page twenty-two of exhibit two forty-five, Mr. Cannon.
Twenty-two?
Mm-hmm. Last market sale in sales history, sale price, two fifty-seven five hundred for the July ten, twenty thirteen sale, you see that?
Yes.
All right. And are you aware that this one, your control property, sold six years earlier, June two thousand seven, for two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars?
Uh, not that I can think of off the top of my head, but, uh...
Same, same page, next column. June twelve, two thousand seven, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, you see that?
I don't know why it's not jumping out at you, mate, council. Yes, I see that, uh, this paragraph shows two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
And finally, this is a one-story ranch-style house, right, the control property?
I'm sorry, does it control?
Your control sale on page one oh five, it's a one-story ranch-style house, correct?
Yes.
And, uh, your target is a two-story house, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. I think we just have maybe one or two more. Uh, T six, page eighty-seven.
T six, page eighty-seven?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, your target is one seven six seven oh, east thirty-two hundred north, Blackstone, is that correct?
Says Dwight on the listing.
Well, it's one seven six seven oh, east thirty-two hundred north, right?
Yes.
All right. And it sold in April twenty-ten for eighty-seven thousand dollars, is that right?
April twenty-ten for eighty-seven thousand, yes, sir.
And are you aware that Sheriff's Department was issued in December of two thousand nine for two hundred and fifteen thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars?
I, if it's on the record, if it's in the list, uh, of, uh, sales of the property, um, then I would have been aware, but I'd have used that, uh, as a sheriff's sale.
Well, if you go to page four of that, exhibit two forty-five. Again, last market sale in sales history, the second column.
Question, question.
Oh, I'm sorry. I get the question. You there?
I'm on page forty, question.
Uh, last market sale in sales history, December twenty-nine, two thousand nine, sale price two fifteen one thirty-seven, do you see that?
Yes, I do.
Buyer name, Federal National Mortgage Association, which is Fannie Mae, right?
Correct.
Uh, seller name, Sheriff of Lubbock County, do you see that?
I do.
That was a foreclosure, right?
Um, it appeared to be so.
Do you know why the house sold for only eighty-seven thousand dollars just five months later?
Not specifically other than it was listed on the open market and, uh, sold, uh, this is a T, I'm sorry, my T six.
T six?
Sold after a forty-nine-day marketing time, so, uh, probably have to say as they want to get a reasonably quick sale on, because otherwise, there's nobody better houses would have sold in forty-nine days, um, I'm that close to a top contractor, right?
Well, if you look at, uh, if you stay on that same page that I, I focused you on, page four of our exhibit, you'll see that the seller in April of twenty-ten was something called Self-Help Ventures Fund?
Yes, I see that.
And are you aware that Self-Help Ventures is a company that uses SBA program and tax credits to subsidize loans?
No, not specifically.
Are you aware that if one of their loans defaults, they take the property back like any lender and will sell it as quickly as possible because of the program terms?
I'm not familiar with that organization.
Uh, you mentioned earlier this evening something called an REO sale?
Yes.
And what's an REO sale?
Real estate loans, most banks already take the title to a property, uh, if they're putting it on the market, they advertise it as REO.
All right. And do you know if this eighty-seven thousand dollar sale that you're using as your target was an REO sale by Self-Help Ventures Fund?
Uh, I'm not aware of Self-Help Ventures Fund being a lender that sells properties that are REO, uh, I don't know.
And actually, you don't even, you have no idea what Self-Help Ventures Fund is, right?
Doesn't sound like Fannie Mae or a bank, it sounds like Self-Help Ventures Fund, uh, or some bank, right, I mean?
All right, let's take a look at the description of this house, uh, it's on page eighty-seven of your report. This is a one-story modular house, and what's a modular house?
Built in components and assembled on site.
And it has seven rooms, three bedrooms, two full baths, and there's a four-car detached garage with a bathroom, right?
There was a series of questions that I'm trying to fill.
Sure, all right, let me, let me break them down.
Sure.
Uh, modular house, we agree that that's what it is, right?
Yes.
All right. Seven rooms, three bedrooms, two full baths?
Yes.
Four-car detached garage?
Looking through the listing.
That's all, we can overlook, that's okay. We're not just spending a lot of time on that. Your first control sale, page eighty-eight. One two nine two oh, east eleven hundred north in Chenawha?
Yes.
Sold May twenty-ten for two thirty-two seven fifty, is that correct?
Yes.
And I guess for the same reasons that you indicated before, you think that a one-and-a-half story house with a full basement is a good match for a modular house on a concrete slab?
Again, council, just working with whatever the market had to provide, if I had found, uh, five sales of modular homes, yeah, if they're the same sale date, uh, it would certainly be business.
But you didn't find anything like that, right?
The market was not cooperative about that modular.
Your second control is, uh, it's on page eighty-nine of your report. One oh six three five, east seventeen hundred north in Pontiac, right?
Yes.
And that one sold in June twenty-ten for a hundred and seventy-five thousand?
Yes.
And how did you adjust for the location of that property in a subdivision next to Brooks Creek?
Just go ahead and answer your question.
How did I adjust that control sale?
For the fact that it's in a subdivision next to Brooks Creek?
Uh, I did not.
All right. Third control sale. One nine oh nine five, east seventeen hundred north in Pontiac, you see that one?
Yes.
Sold in June twenty-ten for a hundred and seventy-eight thousand?
Yes.
Uh, how did you adjust for the location of that property in a subdivision near Brooks Creek?
Uh, the only location adjustment that was left was the, uh, proximity to the turbines, that's what I was solving for.
All right. So if you didn't adjust for the location of this one in a superior place?
Well, it remains my opinion, I guess, uh, that that's a superior location, uh, the lot size, uh, and rural locations are not always using the same parameters which you might use, uh, in a suburban location.
All right, let's go to the next one, it's on page ninety. Uh, three oh five nine six, north seven hundred east in Manville, do you see that one?
I'm sorry, page ninety?
Page...
Wrong page. You were just on page ninety for the control sale for T six.
I apologize. All right, all right, it's okay. Now, you had mentioned earlier this evening, uh, sort of a response to one of my questions, something about T one, two, and three. And I kind of lost track, I was hoping that you were going to take notes, what was your point about T one, two, and three?
You were asking about resales, and I would describe that as a property that had sold, resold, and in fact, was sold again.
Might go a little closer to my...
Sure. The property had sold three times, so, resold twice, and, uh, more recent sales showed the biggest drop after the turbines were removed.
And actually, those three sales, you specifically called out in your report, right?
I did.
Uh, page twenty-nine, first paragraph of your report.
Yes.
And what was the point of your discussion of this paragraph in your report?
Well, the paragraph is fairly self-explanatory, that, uh, it sold three times, its target sale T one, two, and three, losing value each time at the first sale in two thousand nine while the non-project was pending, um, and what I'm addressing here is what some may remember or heard about, the Hindman Study, that, uh, was done in two thousand ten by the twin growth of wind farm in McLean County, and what, uh, the ISU student Jennifer Hindrum had opined is that, uh, something called wind farm anticipation stigma theory because of her study, she was finding that before the turbines are actually built, that property values are dropping to some degree, but then she goes on to say that after the projects are built, that the property values soar, and that's not what this resale shows, it shows after the prop, after the project was built, the property value dropped twenty-eight percent, which, that's not soaring in my book.
And it's your opinion that those price drops are due exclusively to the proximity to the wind farm?
It's perfectly consistent with what the majority of the data shows, yes, sir.
So if you consider this property, these three sales of the same property, a good example supporting your opinion about the negative effect of a wind farm in property values, is that right?
It's one property amongst many, council, I did call it on my report for the reasons I've stated, but, um, I don't hang my hat on any one transaction, uh, or a one computer printout that I've heard, uh, I take it all into account and use, uh, the best information I have available at the time I prepare my appraisers and my studies, and there's a reason appraisers don't just use one count for appraised properties, uh, when you get a good cross-section of market, then you get a much more reliable indication of value.
Okay. Now, this property, T one, two, and three, I'm saying it's the same one, and it's, uh, let's start with the first one, do you have a page sixty-three of your report?
Yes.
And the address is one eight six eight seven, north one hundred east road... And the address is one-eight-six-eight-seven, North one-hundred East Road in Flannan?
Yes.
And on page sixty-three, you've got a listing in your sheet indicating that it sold in August two thousand nine for a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, correct?
Yes.
Have you ever been into that house?
I did try, but I passed most of these back in November.
Did you ever actually go inside this house?
No.
You didn't knock on the door or anything like that? When you mentioned the wild going to be kind?
No.
And then on page sixty-seven, you have a sale a couple of years later, June twenty-eleven, for a hundred and nineteen-nine. Is that correct?
Yes.
And as I understand it from that paragraph that we looked at on page twenty-nine of your report, you attribute that drop between August of oh-nine and June of eleven to Hindman's wind farm anticipation stigma? Is that correct?
Well, I was addressing that particular point as the sale went to software, yes.
And then the third sale is reflected on page seventy-four of your report, correct?
Yes.
And this shows a sale price in February twenty-twelve, a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, right?
Now, that one, I remember specifically that the website, the assessor's website showed the seventeen thousand or whatever the difference was in personal property, and I used what they recorded for the real estate.
Mr. McCann, give the new pleasant versions of two forty-six, which is the assessor's records for this property that we're talking about. You see that, right?
Yes, sir.
Two copies, though?
Yeah.
You can take one with you. So by, just following up on what you said, you did check the assessor's information for this property, right?
This one distinctly exists, yes.
And if we look at page two of the exhibit I just handed you, it does show a twenty-twelve sale price of a hundred and ten thousand dollars, right?
Yes, just as I get my analysis on report.
Do you know who Michelle Libby is? It's L.I.B.
Not at all, no.
If I told you she's the person who bought the house in two thousand nine and sold it in twenty-eleven, would you have any reason to dispute that?
Not in the time that I know.
Do you know who Joan Bullard is?
Sorry?
Joan Bullard, B-U-L-L-A-R-D. Do you know who that is?
I can't say that either.
Have you spoken to any local real estate salesman or brokers in this area to discuss your opinions about impacts of property values?
Not specifically for that purpose, no service. I develop my opinions independently. I have, assuming, over the years, spoken to many, many of the realtors in their experience in marketing properties and their projects. I believe I'll leave to that in my report.
But you didn't do that here?
I don't believe I did. Maybe Mr. Strick here.
Well, if you go to page four of the exhibit I just handed you, exhibit two forty-six.
I'm sorry, what page?
Page four, the last page.
Last page.
There you go. You'll see on the sales history, the buyer in two thousand nine was Michelle Libby.
Yes.
And then in two thousand eleven, she was the seller for one nineteen-nine.
That's what it shows, yes.
For a hundred and nineteen. She sold it, she sold it to somebody named David Olita, O-L-I-T-A. Do you see that?
That's what the record shows.
And then the sale that you're focusing on, the one for a hundred and ten thousand in twenty-twelve, somehow the seller at that point is someone named David Hernandez. Do you see that?
I do.
Do you know any of the circumstances that led to Ms. Libby buying this house in two thousand nine for a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars?
As to my recollection, it was listed on the market, and that's the real criteria that it's been competed for with, the same buyer, competed for the same buyers as competing with other properties. That's the main criteria, not the individual decisions or thought process or circumstances.
And is it your opinion that when she sold the house two years later for roughly twenty-four thousand, twenty-three thousand dollars less, it was because of wind farm anticipation stigma?
I'm telling you, that's consistent with that. This sale was very consistent with what the ISU Hindman study showed, but it also was contrary to what the conclusion of that study was on the anticipation stigma because the value didn't soar. The value continued to plummet.
If I were to tell you that Ms. Libby was a widow with small children, and there were so many problems with the condition of the house that she could not take care of it, would you have any reason to dispute that?
Again, the personal circumstances, the property is still competing for the same buyers.
Why don't we stick to the evidence on the case here?
It's an unfair question. He's already said he doesn't know who Ms. Libby is.
Right, why don't we?
Let's just, I mean, you, Mr. Blazer, don't testify.
Yeah, let's just deal with the record here, the sales history record, not the reasons for the sale.
Do you have any knowledge of the fact that this property consistently suffered water infiltration in the basement and old problems?
Sam, objection.
This will be two forty-seven. Just one question. Do you have any personal knowledge of any of the statements in that, whether any of those statements are true or false?
The only thing that I can verify is true is the seventeen thousand in personal property with the assessor's office removed from the sale price.
And do you know what that seventeen thousand dollars in personal property was attributed to?
It didn't say, and it doesn't say. So there's no answers.
If I was to tell you that somebody accepted calling and garage personal property, you'd have no way of knowing?
Objection. If Mr. Blazer's gonna keep testifying, first of all, we have an exhibit here that no one has authenticated. The witness hasn't seen. And now we're having, on top of that, we're having him testify. I would move to strike pleasant versions of the two forty-seven until he's bringing someone in. Otherwise, I'll put a lot of exhibits in that have no one to authenticate, and I have not been allowed to do.
I haven't moved to admit to the two forty-seven.
Mr. McCann, have you ever seen two forty-seven?
I have not.
Is any of the information, in your opinion, anchored on that regardless or not including the prices at the bottom?
Not as far as I know, I have little bit knowledge of it.
Okay. Did you rely on this document or any information herein to assess the value of the home?
Only the part of the seventeen thousand in personal property was reduced from subtracting the sale price for reporting purposes at the county.
Okay, and that's reflected in the record?
It is.
Okay, so we're gonna strike two forty-seven.
All right, furthermore, Mr. Corral, I haven't moved to admit to forty-seven. I just asked him if he had any other knowledge of it. And I'm not moving to admit to forty-seven. We'll have a different litmus doubt in order to deal with that exhibit.
Okay, I just moved to strike two forty-seven, so two forty-seven is out.
Now, Mr. McCann, let's turn to property value guarantees. You say in your report, it's on page five, that the lender's application is deficient in essence because there's no proposal for a property value guarantee. Is that correct?
In essence, that's what I say, yes, sir.
And it's your position that a property value guarantee would ensure against value loss caused by the project for the non-participating property owners? Is that correct?
One can, it's properly designed, properly administered, yes, sir.
And how would a property value guarantee do that?
There's a lot of different ways it could be written, a lot of different ways it could be handled. Some are better than others. Certainly leaving the property value guarantee administration to the project developer, at least in my experience from talking with people that have been trying to work with a property value guarantee that is administered by the applicant or the developer, it doesn't really work.
That's not my question, sir. I'm sorry.
That's my answer.
My question is, how would a property value guarantee ensure against value loss caused by the project for the non-participating property owners?
The concept is simple. Have the property appraised at the time of the sale or buyout or at the point in time that a property owner elects that they're gonna stay anyhow, despite the change in the character of the area or the noise or what happened. And it's really not much different than the easements or neighborhood agreements that the developers paid people for, except that indexes it to the actual value of the property and not some arbitrary number plucked out of the air for some reason or on some basis. Property value guarantees are used not just with wind farms in some cases, but also planning properties and with landfills, and they're more and more common, just another type of insurance when a large-scale intensive use is being located next to properties that are residential in nature, which they tend to be the most sensitive. It changes the character of the area, but it can create flight from neighborhoods or otherwise diminish the marketability or the item.
So you're saying it would pass the risk of loss on to the developers? Is that basically the point?
Well, only the risk of loss is committed to their project, yes, sir.
The project, when we talked about the DeKalb County study, the project, the wind project that you were dealing with was one that was developed by Florida Power Life, is that right?
There's, yes, the paper subsidiary or next era. The paper subsidiary next era.
And you do know that Florida Power Life did enter into property value guarantees with DeKalb County?
I'd recommended one at that hearing, and yes, a very popular event because of, of course, the attorney officer recommended to allow part on the basis of next era, but not voluntarily. But then they went ahead and after that recommendation, offered up a value guarantee that, to my mind, was a very weak one.
But they did enter into it with the rule of the county, correct?
That's one way to put it, but it certainly was not with the administration of the county. In fact, when I spoke with Mr. Miller, the planning commissioner, the chairman for the county, he confirmed that in fact, the way they did it was a private agreement between the developer and the property owners, which is a lot of weakness for the property. They're just not, they don't have deep enough pocket to go toe-to-toe with somebody like next era.
Now, you do know that the Florida Power Life turbines in DeKalb County are forty-seven-six feet tall, right?
That sounds right.
Forty-five feet taller than the ones proposed here?
I have a fine bone to measure it, but that's, I would dispute that.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Strick.
All right, now, we're at the point now where we can take some questions from the audience. Any interested parties not represented by counsel have any questions of Mr. McCann? I've got a couple out here, so why don't you head over to Mr. Luke and grab that microphone.
My name is John Slavel. I have a small house in the country, right where they're gonna, they're gonna build three wind turbines by it, right out to the southern view. Clear view, nothing except our houses on the other side of the mile. It's on a very quiet street. It's just a small diode.
I have a Muslim, John.
Anyway, they're gonna build three turbines within the southern view, that angle basically. They are going to be eighteen-hundred-and-sixty-four foot, eighteen-hundred-and-ninety-one foot, and twenty-three-ninety-one foot from my house there. That's how I say it. It's on a quiet road. It's very quiet, no traffic at night. Do you think this will impact property values of that house?
It certainly falls within the shorter distances that the paddocks are measurable and measured in other locations, so all the conditions are right for it if they build turbines that close here on this side.
Okay. This is a question I've asked another property value person here. If you have, I know it's impossible, but if you have two houses that are basically identical, and they're both up for auction, and one has twenty or thirty hours of flicker on it a year, will they sell for the same price?
Well, mine is, I don't believe so, if a honest disclosure is made to this prospective buyer. The, whatever they call it, the industry standard of around ten or twenty or fifty hours of flicker is not a property or standard. It's a, it's a it's not something that you expect at a single family home, so a lot of people probably wouldn't ask, but if you're gonna sell a property like that, make that disclosure, I think from the evidence I've seen, includes easements and broths that were recorded on the Canadian properties and and others that I've seen that disclose to a buyer that there is going to be flicker, that the living environment might be affected, then you see discounts when you have a fully on buyer, fully on seller. For those conditions that include flicker, yes, there can be some pretty significant discounts, you know, to get the property sold.
Okay, thank you. With the previous witnesses, I've asked a lot of questions about the noise modeling. I'm very concerned on this project, the submitted application. The one-hundred-and-seven noise receptors were mostly right after the ability to allow noise pollution control or IPCP limits. Have you heard developer experts describe noise modeling in other applications?
Objection. Beyond the scope of this witness's expertise as to noise modeling. Also beyond the scope of the name is testimony. Also beyond the scope of the witness's testimony.
Mr. Blazer, is that your witness? So you just object to be a witness? All right. But...
Beyond the scope is his objection.
It is beyond, no. Mr. Slavel, can you put that in terms of property value? And then you're allowed to question. You've asked him a noise model question, and, and, and it is beyond the scope of his witness.
Okay, well, um, so, let me put it this way. If, if the house, if the noise modeling predicts that the house will be, and the application predicts that the noise modeling, uh, if the noise modeling predicts that the house will be under the IPCP limits, um, will this prevent property value loss?
Uh, no, um, the statutory limits, whether that be the IPA or the Sound Protection Control Board, are often cited in other states, their own standards, that the, the applications I reviewed and worked on, and listened to, as much testimony as you all are hearing on this matter, uh, they typically claim that they will comply with the statutory limits, but there's a real disconnect between that and the nuisance factors that do occur, uh, sometimes even within those statutory limits. So one standard measure does not ensure that there will not be a, a value loss that's related to nuisance or, um, what some people will refer to as health impact, sleep deprivation and so forth. Uh, I'm, I'm not in a position that there's no, no, certainly I'm worried for Mr. Blazer about that, but, but I can tell you, um, when it comes to noise, is that when the background level is increased, that's when people start noticing, and when it's much louder, or they're actually feeling the sound, and some people refer to it as infrasound, low frequency noise, that's when the problems occur. That's usually during the sleeping hours or attributed sleeping hours.
Okay. Do you know, and you talked about the, uh, do you have any examples of houses that you, that you've studied or actually met with people that say abandoned their homes, that were actually in their application, and the sound modeling showed that they were under the limits?
Um, I can think of a couple, sure. Uh, Mr. Shon, who I mentioned earlier, uh, and, uh, his timing would have it, now, several years later, he's finally been able to sell his property, uh, amounts to forty percent of loss. By my appraisal or measurement of it, very detailable. Uh, I visited a house in June two thousand eleven before the application, where that consumer's energy project was even filed. Uh, he started trying to sell the property at that point, I praised it, using the local council, of course, um, um, then through the whole process, the project had been built, they were sure that they were, you know, not exceeding the Michigan standard for noise limits, and, uh, but that's not what his and his wife's experience was, as she reported it to me, uh, in follow-up interviews. Um, they ended up sleeping in their basement to try to get away from the noise, and it's one of the real life effects that go beyond modeling and numbers that you ever spoke to. Um, but they finally were able to sell their property, uh, for really a, you know, a bargain price, uh, if it wasn't for the turbines, but it's where it really represents its market value, um, uh, with the turbines present, so it's, uh, it's the impaired value for forty percent less than would have been. And just real briefly on that, uh, when I praised it in two thousand and eleven, I was couched from that point in time. Uh, I've updated that just in the last few days, uh, since I remember that it sold, um, in, in Basin County, that's located, the property values have gone up fifteen percent countywide, according to Commission and Board of Realtors' grounds. Um, yet his property sold, uh, if you went by track, that would have had a value up by fifteen percent, but it sold for those forty percent less than that. So in current terms, it's a forty percent loss, and that's very much related to his experience with noise, that he, you know, he stuck it out, and, you know, finally found a buyer.
Was he a participant in the, in the farm?
No, he was not, uh, certainly not a one.
And how close was it to his house?
Um, I believe the closest one, uh, I have a report actually, in the car, uh, one thousand one hundred and thirty-nine foot setback from that nearest room.
It's a letter from Country Financial, amended to the number John.
Yes, I have, but that's been circulated.
How at all does this relate to your opinion on the reduction of the state dollars?
Well, um, what this particular letter advises with the value of the client is that they will, they're now applying an additional exclusion to their coverage, as it's wrong in here, or could very well be in here, is that now, uh, it excludes bluesties that now include noise, that goes on, some other things, but, uh, it's specifically excluding noise as a cover issue for properties.
Okay, thank you. Um, this is not much to do with, just a general question. Um, when you're picking a couch, you prefer, it's hard to find a house that's exactly the same value, do you prefer to pick a lower value house than that now, or a higher value house than that now? It's just a curious value.
Well, really, it's whatever the market shows, uh, because if you don't find the right perfect comp, it's kind of hard to find the perfect comp, so, um, I don't exclude either of the blue, and I could, uh, lower or higher, and, uh, within no certain framework, just if it was a million dollar comp, and adjust it down to a one hundred thousand dollar house, uh, that would be way too much adjustment.
Okay. Uh, that's it for my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe I had another interested party out here. Please state your name for us. Go ahead with your questions.
John Hayes. There was some, uh, I don't want to call testimony comment earlier tonight about setbacks, and the closest setback to the base of a turbine, and I don't remember the exact number, it's like four hundred and seventy feet or something a little bit less than five hundred, I believe, to a non-participant's property line. Anybody dispute that? I'm not sure I remember that. Well, I'm just thinking, you know, the, the property values of the neighborhood is not supposed to be diminished by the, uh, whatever's built, whether it be a landfill or turbine or whatever. What if that property owner, that non-participant happens to have five hundred feet away from the base of this turbine, some ground that's maybe got some trees on it, maybe has a creek goes through it, might be a place for a subdivision? And they decide to, um, see about putting a subdivision there, if everything went through and it was granted, um, what would have been, what would have these turbines five hundred feet away from the subdivision do to the value of those lots when you put someone on the market to sell?
Well, the big picture is, I believe it would decrease the marketability and the market acceptance of that location, so, uh, on a valuation theory, that would certainly indicate that they would go down for lots of salt for lower prices, or they wouldn't sell at all. Um, I think an example could probably come of or two, or something that, you know, was built back to a turbine by somebody that had a great deal on the land and bought it. So I might look at it, and, uh, out of my hearing, not everybody in the market reacts the same way, but there's certainly the, a large amount of data that's out there that shows a negative market reaction, pretty well demonstrates that, uh, that that wouldn't really be a safe subdivision investment as far as they go.
Well, now, I'll take that to be that the property value would be decreased, and if that's the case, in your opinion, would this be a violation of the county ordinances?
Well, certainly isn't consistent with that criteria for approval. It's, uh, any proposed special use is supposed to be able to prove up a finding that they're, you know, that won't diminish the average property values, and that, uh, with the market, that shows that at all, it shows the opposite, but it does appreciate properties.
That's all. Thank you.
All right. Do I have anybody else in the audience still waiting to ask Mr. McCann a question?
Just a couple of quick questions here. The, uh, I never, what, what's the title of your report? What, what do they call this?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
The title, did you have a...
Oh, it's a property value impact study, and it's only a case evaluation.
Okay, a couple of these questions have already been answered. You did not physically go out and see and praise and do all this stuff yourself, right?
Well, actually, I did, I, I, the majority of the work on this.
Oh, you did go and visit these, all these houses and stuff in Livingston County?
Well, I wouldn't say I visited them all, but I, I spent a couple of days looking at lots of properties in Livingston County, including, you know, the properties in the
Did, um, did you do just these properties? Did you hold farmsteads, or how did you, how did you determine these certain properties you wanted to look at? I mean, when I look in the country, I see houses, I see farms, I see sheds, I see bins, I see all kinds of, what did you look at specifically?
Well, what I looked at specifically was, um, a basis for a cure to measurement of whether or not there's going to be a value difference in value loss here in Livingston County. And for that, I first tracked down the rural residential properties that were within three miles of turbines, um, and then the rest of the database that, uh, after building the database from, uh, from the MLS, were vetted out to separate properties that were outside that three mile area that were used for precaution purposes. So during that process, it was back and forth, you know, a couple of times, and definitely looking at some of the target sales, I also saw many of the controlled sales and for the may have properties that, uh, you know, were not sold.
Did, did any of those sales include hog houses, anything that were culturally related?
I don't recall any.
Farms, sheds, bins, anything like that?
Well, some of the farmstead properties, but I don't believe any of the comps, uh, they just had any, you know, working farms and, um...
So you mainly looked at houses? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, they've got the houses and that small acreage, and rural residential, uh, some, uh, some of the properties I looked at, certainly the carved out of farms, but, uh, where the landlord sold off the farmstead at some point in Southern Orange, uh, houses built just as a residence, never part of a working farm, but the older ones, almost all were, uh, originally part of working farms.
Did you take into consideration, Dave, when you were looking at your comparisons, that one house might be in an area that's economically different than a house four or five miles away?
Overall, I was treating the Livingston County as one market, because I was using the Livingston County MLS, so Livingston County is only matter, that's what the application is, that's what the project will be built, it's approved. Um, I steer clear, I excluded, I should say, uh, any, you know, the sale transactions in Pontiac, you know, inside the city limits, uh, some have Pontiac mill addresses, but, um, as well as, you know, Streeter and, uh, and White, um, and, or in town in Odell, I was focusing on rural residential, um, where most of the impacts will occur, uh, and where the question of proximity is most relevant.
You don't take any consideration, we got Class A soils in some spot where a typical farmer there might make a hundred dollars, two hundred dollars, maybe more than the person that's on top of a ridge, that when they go to sell property, the local market might not be quite the same?
I didn't specifically evaluate farmland by soil qualities, I'm aware of what you're talking about, though, that, uh, certainly, uh, the higher the productivity index of land, the more attractive this property.
Well, I just know, as you, as you drive through the country, you see very nice looking houses, and typically, when you get into the poorer farmlands, you get into poorer, not quite so pristine, uh, houses, doesn't always look that way, but a lot of the times it does, and typically, that's where these windows are going up, is in the lower, where you start off with a lower quality, a lower price.
Mr. Blazer. Mr. Blazer, do you have a question? Question. This is our question.
The question is, did you take any of that into consideration?
I did not evaluate the productivity indexes of any of the land around, around the property, so I'm answering, no.
This question is about a couple of my neighbors. I've got two neighbors. One owns a house of a small acreage, um, the other neighbor just owns farmland. Uh, if the wind project is approved, the neighbor that owns the house will probably get a neighbor payment for the life of this project, which could compensate for some of this possible home devaluation. The neighbor that owns only the farmland will also get payments if the wind project is built. However, if it is not built, he stands to lose much more than homeowner does for the life of this project. How can the homeowner of the county or others compensate him for his lost revenue? Uh, you've given us examples here of how that, uh, wind company should compensate house loss value. How can the property land be compensated if it's not built? Have you done any studies on that?
Well, just, just something we gotta have, and, uh, what I can tell you is that, uh, right now, um, we're just cresting the peak here, as I can tell, land values in Livingston County, Clean County, and another good farm, uh, good farmland, so if there's anybody with a large tract of land that is anywhere near being destined to reach compensation, there's an, an asset that has never been more valuable, and this would be an excellent time to sell. Property owners, homeowners don't necessarily have that same opportunity, though, there's quite a difference.
So you didn't come up in your presentation, I know you came up with examples, uh, to compensate homeowners, but you didn't come up with any examples to compensate the landowners?
Well, I have in the past, I included agricultural property in my studies, and I can tell you that, uh, for example, the, um, Aerial Afflicators Association, uh, they had a past resolution saying that they reserve the right to not apply.
Question, of course, I asked that in advance.
He's putting it in there. He asked a question.
Just a little, can you, can you restate your question?
My question is, on your presentation, you showed different ways to compensate homeowners. You showed no way to compensate the landowner. The landowner's ten will, will, will lose a lot more money than what the homeowner's going to lose. Now, countywide, you would think if, if you're doing a property value input study, that you would have taken all of the properties in the county into consideration, which is also hog buildings, bin sites, and everything. What you've concentrated on, it seems to me, is houses. So I, I don't know if this is a proper, even a proper name for this study, but, uh...
Is there, is there, Mr. Blazer, is there a question here? I, I'm not seeing a question. I, I understand you, you're, you're trying to get at the, the cost for the landowner, I'm not, I'm not sure what that is, there's...
If it's built, the landowners stand to gain financially for every acre around it. In the study, it's approximately thirty thousand acres in this, in this project.
I, I hesitate to object that that's not the standard that we're looking at. The standard is whether it's serious to the outland people, it's not whether...
This is an opportunity cost issue. Yeah, so, um, since the, since the turbines are not in place and the homes are, we have to look at the interest value to the homes, rather than the land, or the potential opportunity cost. opportunity cost to the landowners. So, not necessarily a valid question.
Well, I, I'm just trying to get, are we treating everybody fairly? Uh, I think it is a loss to the, to the landowner.
All right, that's your opinion. We'll accept that at testimony later. Questions? Hello, that'll be all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other individuals in the audience that have a question?
Brad Snyder. Just have a few, uh, brief questions. Uh, first of all, you mentioned that you testified in, I believe it's over twenty-one state and federal courts, and that you've also presented seminars to professional appraisal bodies or brokers. Um, were you a member to each body that you presented to?
No.
But they felt that you were worthy to testify at their, or to present at their meetings or whatever circumstances they were in?
Well, I think they referred to, uh, the, our, the most prominent one, the appraisers too, seminar. And I was specifically invited by the, by the, the asset that they wanted me to, 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 to sign me up.
Okay.
Um, next question, uh, did you make any adjustments in your period sales analysis to come up with a predetermined result?
Of course, and it's, uh, the numbers ended up where they ended up. The proper way to do an appraisal is objectively and as unbiased as possible, working with the best information available.
The OBNL thirteen uses a three to ten mile, it states that there's an effect in the three to ten mile range that the target data losses will be much higher than shown. I believe you showed a control distance of ten point one miles on one of your studies, and the impact used a five mile setback.
Actually, they used by the kilometers, which translates pretty closely to three miles.
Okay. What would you consider to be a safe control distance from a turbine?
That's a really good question, and, uh, I haven't seen one site that's all answered. From my perspective, three miles works. Um, I guess it starts with that one point one times the height, that's what I call the typical distance. And then you can have what's, uh, in the turbine manuals, uh, somewhere at least, uh, they refer to as like an evacuation zone, it's more like fifteen, sixteen hundred feet. And there, if the turbine starts on fire or anything within that range, you know, you're supposed to, you know, run downwind, get away from, at least that far away from the turbine. So that at a minimum seems to be a safety setback. But I also know instances of blade throw or ice throw that have gone beyond even that, uh, evacuation setback, if you will. Uh, recently reported out of, uh, I remember the turbine class that threw a blade chunk, uh, I think it was twenty-six hundred feet, right about a half mile. I can't tell you statistically what the chances of a blade coming through your roof are, but I know I don't want, um, well, talking about setbacks. So if you're restless, as you think of that, I think the next one would really be, you know, the, the noise impacts. And depending on who you talk to, and, you know, I consider firsthand reports to be much more reliable, you know, the people that actually experience it. And, uh, and those could extend quite a bit further, for a lot of mile and a quarter, mile and a half. Then I look at the property value data and see that it's, uh, as the turbines have gotten larger, it seems that the impacts and property guys want further. Some of the original, uh, information I looked at was with the shorter turbines, uh, lower power off it. Apparently the impacts weren't reaching as far. Like somebody earlier worked out of the UK, uh, subject. I read a few things that I can't vouch for, although I read that the low frequency noise may extend quite a bit further than even three miles. So for people that are highly susceptible to that.
Objection, beyond scope with this witness's expertise.
That pretty much concludes my remarks on a, a safe setback. Uh, there's a lot of different things to consider.
Move on to the next question. You offered some suggestions as ways to lower the risk of nearby, um, property owners that could be adversely affected by the wind farm projects. Do your suggestions, in your opinion, make wind farm construction impossible?
Of course, and, uh, I did an analysis a few years ago that, uh, you know, using a typical, uh, size of wind farm, number of turbines and the cost. And, uh, based on the population density of the example, uh, I used, uh, we're only a month of, of...
Objection, beyond scope with this witness's expertise, he hasn't testified that he has any knowledge whatsoever of the cost or the development process for constructing a wind farm.
I believe the question was, does his theory or his, his thought on wind farm make it possible to develop a wind farm? Is that, is that pretty true?
That's correct.
Okay.
Because it relates to property value, I think he was asking.
Oh, okay. Is that...
My question is the suggestions he's made about, yeah, the property value and ways to protect that for the, for the, for the non-participants that could be adversely affected by that. Do these conditions that he has suggested make it impossible to build a wind farm? And this witness hasn't indicated any knowledge whatsoever of what goes into the financing or construction of a wind farm?
It's a setback question.
No, it's...
It's a setback question. Is there a place where you could build it under these setbacks that he's talking about? That's the limitation of the question, and I would ask you to be, to answer that question.
Yeah, why don't you ask? You're not, this is nothing to do with the financial capabilities of a wind farm, right? Or the feasibility of this in relation to property values?
Well, I was prepared to answer regarding an analysis just like that I had done in the past. But I think the real thrust of that question was the property value guarantees within the setback that we're talking about. And, uh, no, I don't believe it would financially kill a project.
My last question, um, how long should a homeowner who, um, feels that they are dealing with some adverse effects from a, from a wind farm, how long should they wait to market their property, to wait for the market to stabilize and to rebound or recover? Is there a time where we would make a recommendation that you should wait a certain amount of time?
I hesitate to give a recommendation on that, because if I'd been following my advice and it didn't work out right, then, uh, you know, uh, I don't think we answer any of your questions. But, um, the property value guarantee in place, that would allow for a more reasonable basis for people to sell properties without being under some artificial deadline. You have to sell within, you know, three months or six months or a year, or the property value guarantee goes away. It should be something that lasts long enough that people can act in a prudent manner and decide whether or not they, you know, it bothers them, because, uh, I'm sure they can find a number of people that some doesn't bother them. And that might be perfectly controllable, because there's many that won't build.
Okay, no more questions, thank you.
Anybody else in the audience with questions? Anybody else out there? All right, um, I think we reserve our right to ask some questions. May I have some county staff have any? I have just a couple. Of course, I have a couple. All right, as we went through all these sales earlier, something really jumped out at me. And, and for those in the audience, of course, you don't have that at all at the time, but the CDOF. And I think we made some reference to that earlier, to what? The CDOF.
Okay, two little days on the market.
Okay. What was disturbing to me was, am I reading this right? I mean, in, in several of these instances, these people are seeing almost double the time that, uh, on the market, is that, is that a, like, okay, period sale, Lee County three, one thirty-three. If I read that correctly, that tells me that lease sale two T was on the market for one thousand forty-one days.
That's correct.
Lease sale three C, five hundred and forty-four days. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that's almost double for the ones near the turbine, is that?
That's right. It's, uh, actually the target area in Lee, it, uh, was, uh, the average was six hundred and thirty-five days cumulative days on the market. And, uh, in the rural area, which, uh, averaged closer to ten miles from the turbines, uh, it was two hundred and ninety-seven days. You know, so, but the, uh, that information frankly was not available. Uh, I, because I wanted to do that same type of analysis, uh, Livingston MLS didn't want itself to backtrack into prior listing. Uh, so all I really had was the most recent record at the time. And that would include, you know, uh, changes of brokers that, uh, all is on the last listing, so, um, I really had to, you know, use the, uh, the, the Calhoun study for purposes of showing what the, compared to the marketing time is, because that data wasn't available.
Okay, all right. Next question regarding the similar things. If, if you were, if you were hired by a bank to perform an appraisal on any of these properties, these are the same devaluation or inflation or devaluations that you would apply to a standard appraisal in your expertise?
If I was doing appraisal for a bank, and actually I've seen some that, that they have started, which have started discounting, uh, but just like this study, it really should be done arbitrarily, or there should be some basis for it. And frankly, taking counts that are near turbines, means you don't need to make an adjustment for the turbines, because that, that acts already there. But if they're gonna use a count from ten miles away, I would suggest to any appraiser, you know, look a little further, look a little closer there.
Okay, okay. But I guess more of my question, as you, just as an example, you, you devalue, um, a home that had three versus five acres at ten thousand an acre, that that was standard procedure, and you would apply that if you had to do an appraisal, not just relative to this study?
Absolutely. These are fairly typical adjustments. The only thing that's not typical is what we're trying to solve for, I believe did, and solve for, which is, what is that one other category of, of the one independent variable, what is it due to the dependent variable, meaning the value for the sale price? And with everything else pretty well controlled, or something like that, or adjusting as appraisers use the term, uh, that leaves the difference, uh, as being the approximate of the turbine. And that could be anything from the visual, or the aesthetics, or the noise, I just call it mark or resistance, because I don't know what's on everybody's mind. I've talked to a lot of people, I know what's on a lot of their minds. I don't know if it's a sale, or a, or seller's price.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions, CD? Comes in. All right, Mr. McCann, I think we're, we're completed. All right. All right, so we got to Mr. McCann with property values. I, I believe the next witness that will have, and it's not gonna be the same thing as, as Mr. Steiner, uh, has something to add with property value. I, I believe, um, just from previous, I believe there will be opportunity for individuals, um, to again speak, uh, following Mr. Steiner's presentation. So I, uh, we've got a list here of individuals, um, we'll leave where we left off. I don't know what we can...
Mr. Corral, I do, I have been approached by a couple of people who are, I think, on the list, um, who wish to testify tomorrow night. I will send them to know our first thing in the morning as to who those people are identified, so that, uh, everybody can compare. I, I think there's only two or three that reached out to me at this point. There may be others. I know there's, you know, we've had the mayor of Forest reach out and was testifying tomorrow night, I think. So I, I guess we'll try and, I mean, whoever's telling, reaching out to me, I'm telling them to come. Uh, and then we'll get on the list from there, if that's acceptable.
If I, if I may, Mr. Corral, we've also been advised, a number of people would be here tomorrow, uh, intending to, to speak. My suggestion, because a number of the last time you did this, either weren't prepared or weren't here, I would recommend you start from the top of the list and then work your way down. I think that's the most equitable way of doing it. Uh, as for the mayor of Forest, my first standard is that he's entitled to come the next week, uh, tomorrow.
Oh, okay, because I thought it was tomorrow. That was, the twelfth day, okay. Um, I mean, I just, I don't want to tell people to come and not have, I mean, who are making special trips. I mean, that's just facility, so...
Okay, okay. Mr. Steiner, can you, can you give me an indication of approximately on your presentation time? Am I in it? Twenty or twenty-five minutes?
Twenty.
That's the most.
That's an hour, take a break. Okay. So it looks like you'll have, uh, an hour and a half of opportunity to, to probably go through individuals. So if, if we can kind of plan with that, um, can we leave it with that as we're looking at it?
Yeah, that's fine. I'm just trying to, I, I don't want to have someone calling and say that they're only telling me to testify, but an hour and a half, these people are talking to a few of us.
Okay, all right.
These aren't our test.
Okay.
Three, four, six, probably.
Okay.
Probably really have dozen from, from, from what we've been told. No, they have, everyone's on the list. The, the signup list, correct. I mean, I think the, the general assumption is that you're gonna go, start to talk to a lot of people down again for people.
Okay. All right, let me leave everybody with this thought, all right? I, I just wanna, I just wanna throw this out there, all right? As we move forward through this arduous process, it is evident that many of you are, are frustrated or tired out of this process. I get that. In recent testimonies, we have heard much reference to an outdated WEX ordinance and a lack of satisfaction testifying in front of this particular board instead of the full county board. I will remind each of you, this process has been in place for all special use applications since the inception of county zoning ordinances. This process has not been altered or varied to accommodate WEX applications. Rather, it is the same process some of you may have taken to at home-based businesses or special property needs, albeit not as long and not including pounds of exhibits and hours of testimony. This is the correct and appropriate forum to add these discussions. And as a member of the county myself, I can appreciate this open discussion, as all governing bodies have not adopted similar processes. Regarding the conversations about an outdated WEX ordinance, I will remind each of you that this ordinance is and was in effect when this particular application was presented. A committee has been created to discuss this ordinance, and comments regarding this ordinance should be presented at that particular site. We must move forward with the ordinance in place at time, at the time. I will admittedly take some responsibility for the current ordinance and the details within. Some six to eight years ago, meeting similar to this, we held at the historic courthouse to discuss the possibility of the new WEX ordinance. Steps were taken to adopt something to allow our county to explore additional property uses and opportunities for our residents and property owners. From these public hearings, which very few of you were in attendance, specific details were omitted in an effort to be more flexible with opportunities. Frankly, most of these conversations revolved around aviation hazards and citing what aerial applications might. Little of any conversation was had regarding flicker, noise studies, health effects, infrasound or alien impacts, which now consumes our time almost exclusively. Aviation and aerial application has been touched on briefly by the applicant during these proceedings, but truly as a testament to the flexibility of the process, US county residents are afforded. The WEX ordinance omitting specific details is relying on the special use process in public hearings to flush out considerations that are important to the evolution of our county. I heed the same warning to those involved in the committee today. Specific details allow very little flexibility and provide an irrevocable legal avenue for development. This could possibly generate an application that's... development. This could possibly generate an application that satisfies, satisfies all requirements and must be passed based solely on its ordinance fulfillment. Today our ordinance allows us deliberately to discuss changing concerns. I've asked Chuck to make available several copies of what we refer to as standards for special use. Mr. McCann has made references to those, which I encourage those in attendance to pick up a copy. This document helps guide our board through the process of determining the potential impacts of zoning applications. The standards for special use document accompanies all zoning cases we hear and applies a consistent set of guidelines for us to follow. Granted, each object may be considered in a different way based on that consideration. Certain characteristics may even be too large to overlook and a specific condition placed on the application to offset these issues. Moving forward, I would like to give each and every concerned citizen the opportunity and tools necessary to make their voice be heard. I ask that you consider the standards of special use document in your conversations and focus more on the conversation on why the application should be considered for special use, how it meets or does not meet the criteria, and give our board the information and viewpoints necessary to make a reasonable and founded decision. I however would like to warn each of you, as you testify, your testimony is subject to cross-examination. Be careful as you include evidence in your conversations that you may not understand as you could be questioned on it. If you make a reference to a fact, I will have to allow any line of questioning regarding it. Additionally, I ask that you somewhat vet your sources. Much of the testimony and comments by all involved has revolved around the internet. I understand it is a great tool, very efficient and generally reliable. However, I'm here to tell you that for everything you read on the internet, there is another internet source that will contradict that first source. Consider the credentials of each source and weigh in your own mind if you feel they would be a believable source. After all, you are putting your own name behind your opinion as well. As the chair of the board, I have been charged with responsibility to provide a good end product. This product is a recommendation to our county board based upon factual data, weight of testimony, expert opinions, and community census, consensus. As we near long stretch in these proceedings, I will continue to remind everyone to remain involved in the process. Continue being a great audience of those speaking and continue to make the guests in our county feel welcome. Although you may not agree with their feelings, viewpoints, or opinions, there may be an equal amount of individuals elsewhere that completely agree. There are two sides to every coin. I offer that statement and I really would like individuals to take a look at the standards for special use. That is our, our procedural per se guidelines for us to follow. And as you guys are going to get the opportunity to speak in front of us, if you can try to focus your efforts on, on how you feel this project may or may not follow that, I think that will help all of us. We'll get better information instead of information that may be off task or, I think it's, it's really a good opportunity to focus our conversations and get through these evenings a little bit better. All right?
Mr. Chairman, before we adjourn, I just had a couple of follow up things. People have reached out to me. One is, I believe Seaverston Exhibit 1 is now in evidence. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. We have what Mr. Slagle asked Mr. McCann about. Can we label that Slagle exhibit one just for reference?
We can. Yeah, we'll take it at the next meeting and we'll get it in there for sure.
But I just wanted to make sure. And then at the last meeting, because it was during Mr. McCann's cross-examination, I, I actually asked that the entire use map go into evidence. I had already had copies of that data. I would ask that the entire set of use map instead of certain provisions of it can go into evidence.
No objection.
As you see, I'll see exhibit 40 and I'll hand it to the board before we go. But I just wanted to make sure.
Okay. Okay. Tomorrow, when everybody arrives, we'll have a good list of who's going to testify tomorrow evening. If you are represented by counsel, you may want to speak with him to possibly be on that list. I think that's it for the evening, isn't it? It's kind of early, you guys. I've got a motion like this. Do I have a second?